Johnson has been kind enough to say the prayer for us today.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today for guidance. We ask your presence to be with us because we're doing the college business and we want to do it right. And all the help that you can provide us, we will greatly appreciate. We want to say special blessing on the Crane family this morning. We've lost one who's been close to us for many years in Shirley Crane. She's been working here for a number of years in the administrative offices and had been coming back after retirement and helping out part-time and we're certainly going to miss her. And we place her in your hands, but be with the family because I know they're really at a loss without her because she kind of ran that household and took good care of her husband and all the various combined children. So please be with that household, please be with Dawn. We do ask these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dick, for the prayer and also thank you for your remembrance of Shirley Crane. I think we all have our special memories of Shirley. She always had that twinkle in her eye and that smile she would give and she was fun at telling a story and sharing stories with and she's a treasure.
She will be missed, that's for sure.
She will be missed by the St. Petersburg community, by this college, by her family, by all her friends. Just a lovely, lovely lady. And that was beautifully said, how and hopefully her family will take some, have some comfort in all the prayers being offered for them. We'll now move to our retirement resolutions. Mr. President? Am I wrong on that?
No, but I need the resolution. Thank you, sir. We have three resolutions and I believe only one of them is here today. We have a resolution for Molly McCollough from St. Petersburg College, St. Pete Gibbs. I don't think Molly's going to be able to be with us today. We'll make sure we convey that appropriately. Jackie Addis, who I think is a tough person, she was not going to be with us today. So we will, of course, express our appreciation. But we do have John Wisnewski. Where's John? John, please come forward. I was wondering who that casual-looking, smiling guy in the back was, okay? Nice of you to be here today, John. Thank you.
Januslaw Wisnewski, known as John to his colleagues, moved to the United States from Poland in 1984, settling in Florida. He relocated to New Jersey a few years later, moving back to Florida permanently in 1995. John began his career as custodian with St. Pete College in March of 97. He began at the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus in the Natural Science Building where he remained for 10 years. The following three years were spent in the Humanities and Language Arts Buildings caring for its occupants. John earned his Certified Custodian, Master Custodian certificates while at St. Petersburg College. In 2002, John was promoted to Custodian II. And John has been married to Vera for 35 years. He has one son and two grandsons in Poland. And whereas John is a member of the Polish Engineering Association, he is also active in the Polish Center of John Paul II Church in Clearwater and the Polish American Club in St. Petersburg. And whereas John loves to travel and enjoys learning about different cultures, he and Vera hope to take a Mediterranean cruise together soon. We wish him much happiness in his retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Januslaw John Wisnewski and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. John, congratulations.
So John's been with us for 13 years and his wife preceded him in retirement. And I asked John this morning, so when are you going to Poland to meet up with your wife? And he said, "It's winter time over there. I'm waiting for her to come back." So next spring, he looks forward to a return to his homeland. But John's done a great job for us. He's represented one of the Eastern European countries on our very diverse staff and we wish you the best and hope for you nothing but life and happiness. Is there a motion to accept a retirement resolution?
I shall move.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Billerakis, seconded by Mr. Johnston. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now have reports. And I have the honor of giving the board chair report. There's been a lot happening at our college. First of all, we had a very meaningful meeting with the University of South Florida Board of Trustees. Their board members from St. Petersburg, correct? And also some members, Ms. Sembler, who I know sits on the main board of the university. Mr. Lang was there. I think all of us were there.
Yeah.
It was a great turnout. Dick, do you have some comments on that event?
Well, I just remind you and Dr. Law that it's our turn to invite them back to us so we can maintain that camaraderie.
And this event was to honor Dr. Law and to welcome him here to the college. And one of the things that I have challenged Dr. Law, and I know we talked about that meeting, was to come out with something meaningful from that meeting. Just not just meet to meet, although that's important. There is some meaning there. It's also to have a better partnership with our friends down at the St. Petersburg campus of USF. And so I think as part of Dr. Law's report, he's probably going to touch on that. Terry or Evelyn, do you have anything more to say on that?
No, I thought it was a good idea. And Debbie is the chairman of this, that committee.
Is she? Of the St. Petersburg?
Uh huh.
I would like to also point out nationally, this coming October, I think it's October 5th, the White House is actually having the first community college summit, I think, in the history of our country. And so that's an exciting time for community colleges to be put in the spotlight that way. There's been articles and national publications about this. It'll be interesting to see what comes out of that because there's no set agenda right now as far as to what's supposed to be accomplished by this summit. But it's going to be happening in October. We also had a wonderful fall faculty meeting. I think everyone would agree as to the energy in the room. It was a tremendous event. I mean, Dr. Law introduced himself in a very meaningful way to the faculty. We were introduced to the many new faculty members. I think there was 20-some new faculty members up there, maybe even more. It was a meaningful day and I know, Dick, you attended that and Devron and I attended. Do you have any comments to share on the fall faculty meeting?
No, but I think it's very rewarding and I'm glad to see us do something like that. And I think it's important that we can participate to get a, because the faculty is one of the mainstays of this institution. They're the one that do the direct hands-on with our students. And so I think it's good for us to be there when we can and participate in those events just to show our support to the faculty.
The energy in the room was tremendous. It was really a, it was a great start to this year. And Dick, thank you for your comments. Also, we had an event up in Tarpon for the Billerakis Education Center. Miss Evelyn, do you want to tell us a little bit about that, please?
Well, it was, we were grateful for it and we had a lot of people and the construction company did a great job. And everyone that came, I think, really enjoyed it. And thank you. Thank you, Dr. Law.
300 of your closest friends. And that is an exclusive list.
Thank you.
And I see Janice Buchanan here. Do you care to tell us about what's happening this coming Friday? You have to come up to the microphone though, that's the requirement here.
Go ahead, Counselor Labe, go ahead and get it, welcome. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, 0. Life on Lurma. There's going to be a sign thanks to Susan and her crew, Dr. Law, the board for, and Tom Furlong helpful with this also. We're very pleased that on the front side of the building facing Klosterman and Belcher, you know where this is, will be the signature of Abraham Ratner, which is as the architect Ed Hoffman had already designed some years ago. And then Lepa Ratner Museum of Art underneath. Last year, we had counted 42,000 people who came to the museum. That was just the ones who signed in. So that's not everyone else who came. And they came without a sign on the front of the building. So just imagine what's going to happen now. Please come and celebrate with us. 7:30, there's a wonderful exhibition before that, Florida Watercolor Society. And the galleries that you all will enjoy, please come and celebrate. And at 7:30, the lights go on.
Tell them the date.
This Friday, this Friday, the 24th.
Does it start at 5:30 with the preliminary?
Yes, well, the galleries will be open during that time, sure. So give yourself an hour beforehand to enjoy the art and then come and watch those lights go on.
Thank you, Janice. You get an A for extemporaneous speaking this morning, so.
Thank you.
Last meeting, the board approved the call to action. We sent that letter up to AACC and ACCT and I received an email which I passed on to our president to say we were the first college in the nation to sign on that resolution as agreeing to it. The national organization all adopted it, but they asked each college to adopt it in the country. So we were the first, so that says something for us. We're not tallying behind, we're moving along. And really, that's a subject I want to talk a little bit about today because I think this is a challenge which is not only given to us nationally from the administration, from Washington, but it's also the right thing to do. We have to, and the key words, I think, in that resolution is, we've always been the organization, the vehicle, community colleges have been, to give access to people. And we've always emphasized that and we never want to move away from that access. We are the open door. And Mr. Lang told the moving story about his acceptance of this institution and how important open access is. That's the case for so many of us. But we have to move from just simply open access to success. And our success rates as a country in achieving what people need to achieve has not been met. And I'm glad for this emphasis from the administration up in Washington on this student's success. And it's something we should embrace and I know we do. And there's many challenges to it. Mr. Johnston was just mentioning earlier and he's probably going to talk a little bit about the, how we measure this. But I have a few slides I want to show, so I'm going to go to the board like they've asked us to do. And I'm going to apologize to all the educators because my presentation's very basic. I don't have all the fancy usual things that come with this, but this was just, and this is, these figures are a couple of months old. It shows the unemployment rate in this country and it's gotten worse, but it shows that it's discriminatory. It's discriminatory based on your education level. And I think this is very telling as far as the need for education. The jobs that are being created in this country are jobs that demand an education level to be achieved. I think this is a very telling slide. I don't need to explain it to you, it speaks for itself. And this, but it's very telling, very telling. The next slide, please. This is, you know, of all the folks who've talked about success, and I sat through three days in DC of people talking about success, it really came down to two items that were prevalent in everyone's presentation. If a person is a full-time student, that's probably the best indicator of their success. The longer you drag out the achievement of trying to attain your AS or AA degree or bachelor's degree, the higher the probability of failure. And so the more, the more compact you can make it, and the full-time students at community college do tend to be successful at a much, much higher percentage than a part-time student. And so this is where you get into things like, and we've talked about, I know with Michael Bennett here, of how important financial aid is. And that's one of the reasons that we're talking about potentially with our financial aid, informing students, which is one of the strategies to consider, is informing students of what their aid would be if they're full-time. So they see that. So that, and I think it was very telling, Dr. Law, as part of today's board agenda, has a, who are new students here, the cohort that's currently here? And we use that cohort very broadly in that because it's just the new students who started. That's the only thing they have in common, really. But he, it's part of that report, it includes the financial aid for part-time and full-time students. And the more people we can get full-time in that, the more the chance they have to succeed. And also, the other telling factor which was common in everyone's presentation was the, the more remediation, the less chance of success. Now, this is a much harder thing to fight because this goes to the K through 12 system. And the better they are prepared before they get to us, obviously, the better the chance of success is there. So that's something which we as a board, I think, we've talked about meeting with the school board, but that's something that needs to be a constant goal and how we can focus remediation as narrowly as possible with our students to get them just the courses they need because they feel a tremendous burden to keep going to school and not being in college-level courses yet. And so that's, those are the two biggest factors that seem to be common in everyone's presentation who spoke about that. Now, again, the educators in the room could probably list another 50 items which they would put on this list and how to combat them. But as a layperson who's not a professional education, you know, I'm an accountant and I could count, when everyone's presentation included these two points, you said, "Well, these must be the most prominent among them as far as challenges that affect the completion rate." And then I just put some strategies to consider that I heard, and these are, again, I'm not so arrogant as to say I'm the author behind any of these. These are parroting that were, things that were told to us during those three days of presentations by education experts. The cohort-based classes and programs, and I'm going to show you an example. Matter of fact, why don't we just show the example now? Is that fine? We've had success on this here at our campus, but we do it through our bachelor programs, some of our bachelor programs, that where students go as part of a group and move along our college. And you've noticed at graduation, our four-year students graduated a much higher percentage than our two-year students. I mean, our graduates are not proportional in graduation to what our student population is here. Here's a college out in California which is, the emphasis there is what is a learning community? And you could see that they, these are, where even in the AA and AS programs, they're putting students together in a cohort to say, "You're going to move along the college together as a group. You're going to get less choices in your class selection. We're going to say you're going to, you know, go this type of thing and we're going to kind of help select the classes for you and you're going to have classes with a lot of the same people over and over again." And as a result of this, they've said this has proven successful, that there's intangibles of building friendships and social, which helps people. There's a support system. You're going to school with people who you become friends with. They may be good at science, you may be good at math, you help them out in the subject you're good at, they help you out in the subject you're weak at. And that's what happens as part of these cohorts. Also, it's peer pressure. We're all subject to peer pressure even at our age, but at that age, if, hey, my friend got an A in this test, I need to study a little bit more. You form little study groups. Also, with faculty seem to interact well with the cohort too as they become familiar with the students. They also have a brochure here. Can we bring up the brochure? And we'll be glad to get you copies of this or maybe I could ask the college to get copies of this to you. It's interesting because this is something which has proven to work. And I think that's the thing, when you're trying these different things, you want to go for something that's actually successful. And this is not proven successful just at this college that I'm giving the example. There was another speaker who spoke on student success. Matter of fact, I think his program is, his association is called Student Success. He's from Indiana and he told of a college there which has the, has a very poor population, which usually there is a relationship between the economics of your students and student success. And they were showing outstanding completion rates because of the cohort philosophy. They really put that big time into that college in a tremendous way. And so this seems to be a program which is successful and it's something I think we as a college board, as a college administration, need to consider as far as policy. Is this something that we want to embrace here and help to enhance student success? If we go back to my other slide, the, I forgot the other factor slide there. There we go. On the block scheduling, that seems to be something which is a trend, which is happening. Actually, they're saying, there was a lot of discussion whether giving students so many choices actually enhances success or actually works the other way. And so I think that's something you want to take a look at, block scheduling, they're actually offering less electives as far as through a program. I don't know, again, that's something that the education experts in the room would have to help us with, but I think it's something we need to look at and examine. Obviously, if you go to these events and they talk about these things, the purpose is to see if they apply to our college and would work for our college. The other thing is distance education. We're so proud as a community college system across this nation of what we're doing in distance education, but let's face it, the success rates in distance education aren't what they need to be. They don't succeed at the same rate as a student in the classroom. And we need to talk about this. And I think this is an issue that's beyond just our board and beyond even the scope of this college because I think, but we've always taken, as Dick has pointed out, leadership roles. And I think this is a public policy thing. I actually think, and this is just my idea here, this didn't come from the thing, the small class ideas did. They were saying, speakers were saying that actually, distance education requires much smaller classes than your traditional class. They were talking in the area of 14 to 16 students is the premium. Obviously, that won't financially work. And so I, that's my part, the accountant in me put the parentheses there, the tuition premium. And this is something, maybe that, you know, you factor in the expense of going to a college, okay, of getting in your car, the transportation cost, of the other costs that may be involved with that, of missing work time because to be at the most convenient time for the class that's at session. So why not consider a public policy of having tuition enhancement? To have a class which is effective at 14, 16 students or whatever the optimum, and I'm just saying, that's one speaker who mentioned that class size, by the way. But why not have tuition, a different rate of tuition for a distance education class with the emphasis saying, "We're going to help you really succeed in this class by having a much smaller class where we can focus on your, on your success." I don't know if that's a good idea. Again, I'm throwing these things out from what I've heard from these national speakers and the financial aid thing I already mentioned. So I think this is a good discussion. I know, Dick, you want to talk.
Well, I wanted to ask you some questions, if I could, before you leave, sir. The cohort-based classes, is that more to a single-campus institution or multi-campus? Because I think it'd be much easier to do if on a, on a single-campus institution. Because you would have, you could bring people together easier than you could on the multi-campus. And I don't know how that would work for us.
I don't know about the college out in California, but the one in Indiana was a multiple-campus institution. So that, it does work there too. And I don't have the name of that. I wrote the guy, I wrote George Boggs yesterday for the guy's contact information, then I wrote him yesterday morning, but he hasn't responded to my email.
And the other question I had for you was on the class size. I would think that maybe in this consideration, when we do e-campus distant learning, it probably costs us, I'm assuming, I may be wrong, costs us less money. So we might be able to absorb smaller class sizes without a tuition adjustment, simply because those class sizes, they're probably going to meet once a week together and their other two courses are going to be online. And it probably, it costs the college less. So maybe you wouldn't need to consider a tuition adjustment.
That would.
Just some thoughts if we're going. But I had, something else I wanted to bring up that you touched on, and this is directed to all those that are going to Toronto. Because I think with your contacts, Mr. Chairman, you can probably talk to both Noah Brown and George Boggs because they issued a paper that came out from ACCT and AACCT about the completion rates. And not that I have anything wrong with that idea, but I have a concern of how we measure that. Because recently, I attended a class, or a couple of classes here because I chose to. And I got to, when I got this, I said, "You know, if, if," and I don't know how we judge it, "if I got thrown into the pool," because I'm coming and going, and if I'm in that pool that they're measuring on completion rates, then I have distorted that immensely. Because I'm not going after a degree, I'm not going after a certificate. I'm here for knowledge. And I suspect a lot of people who come and go do it for that reason, they're just in and out. And so I don't know how, Mr. President, we, we judge these percentages on completion. Because if you throw me into the pool, I have distorted it. And I suspect that a lot of community colleges are that way. And maybe when you, I know you've got a great rapport with these two individuals, when you talk to them in Toronto, you might want to bring that up and set some criteria down because the completion rates that they're setting out here, and we're known for in the community college system, because we heard the lady from Microsoft a couple of years ago chastise the community college system for its completion rate. And I don't believe that's fair if we took into consideration those students who started out in a degree-seeking or even a certificate-seeking and separated those from the ones who are coming and going. Or if you drop out, we see some students that take 10 years or longer to graduate. You need to pull those out of the statistics. And maybe, Mr. Chairman, in your relationship with them, you could ask them about that. And that could be taken into consideration in the way we value this because it makes the community college system not look good. And I don't think, I don't think it's fair if that's the case. And I have no idea what we do, Dr. Law, as far as that measurement. Am I taking course here? Does that get things all filed up and distort the picture?
Mr. Chairman? Dick, thanks for raising. Am I on here? The, a lot, you've raised a really good issue. Let's take it by the numbers. And the cohort presentation today is intended for us to watch this unfold in front of us. So we'll come back to that. But in a nutshell, the workforce courses don't count. They're in neither the numerator or the denominator. The kind of short courses you're taking do not come under the dialogue we're having. It's still important for us for everybody to succeed in those courses, but that's not the deal that these folks are talking about. In fact, the shift is the other side of the coin. Because they have tried to track both universities and community colleges, they use, historically, they've used the number of students who succeed over a three-year or five-year basis, if you can imagine, only tracking full-time students. So community college students have, the lion's share of the students that we serve have often not even been in the kind of, the internal, I'm looking at Ken, is the iPads data, the sort of standard data that goes across. So everybody's shifting to find the new ground as to how do we make this measurement? When do you start to create the denominator and then who's going to be in the numerator? And that's how to do the percentages. I think it's fair to say, though, that far too few, we may be asking the wrong questions at the front door. So in the credit side, Trustee Johnson, the, if we ask a student, "Are you degree-seeking?" they would not be included in there. If they say, "No," they would, "I'm not degree-seeking," they're not in. Here's how it gets ugly fast. If you say, "No," If you say, "No," you're not eligible for financial aid. So in order to provide financial aid, a student has to declare that they're degree-seeking, even if they may have some less, they may try to get three or four courses in order to get a certain skill in business or something else, they'll show up as non-completers over a period of time. So we, the dialogue that we're having around this table is the same dialogue that Ken has heard at the highest levels. How do we measure it? What's fair? But let's be honest, not enough students are making it to the finish line. And that's what we really need to focus on. And we've got some strategies that we'll discuss as to how to start looking at that.
Well, I agree with you. We need to get everybody through who wants to get through. We need to work on that. But I didn't want our numbers to be skewed, and I have no idea how they measure that. But if I signed up, not for workforce classes, if that's what you want to call them, I needed them for workforce. But if I wanted to take a course, and there's a couple of them looking for, and I can't get online to find them, that I would sign up as a student taking a regular credit course. And I'd only want to take one or two courses. I wouldn't want to take, and I wouldn't sign up as a student who intended to graduate. I did that so long ago, I forgot. But if that would skew it, then somehow there has to be maybe another box you check that you're just here for a course or two and then gone for a couple of years and come back for something else.
Listen, and we do ask students at the front door, if you're degree-seeking or if you're non-degree-seeking. So that would be the language that we use. But I think the question, I think we'll be a lot smarter when we get back from Toronto and we hear what it is, how they are intending to move forward with some of this. But I don't think we have all the answers.
No, but I'm just, we just started by challenging those that are going to Toronto to bring this up, because when they issue a report like they have here, and we've heard before, community colleges, I think, unjustly criticize for the completion rate. And I don't think it's totally fair, because our students generally do take longer, and I don't know how they measure them, but there ought to be an equal way to measure them. You can't measure them like you do a university system. Because generally, students come in and they're after a degree, and they intend to do it in four years. Well, that may not be the case in community colleges. And that not be the case for St. Petersburg College.
I think we ought to follow this discussion. When we do the cohort and start laying out the data that I think will track some of your questions, Mr. Chairman, we could come back to that. I'm happy to do whatever the board wants.
That's great. Let's do it then.
Okay, good.
And I think this is...
And that's later in this agenda.
This is something, too, which we, we know where this is headed nationally. They're going to start tying everything into this success rate. And that's why, that's why we need to be, and I'm glad we were the first college even to sign our commitment to the resolution, because you'll see financial aid tied to this, you'll see grants award tied to this. If you're not succeeding as far as success rate, you may get lower scores or penalized in some financial way. And so it's just so important that we're on top of this topic, not only because it's the right thing to do, which is definitely, as you said, bottom line, students need to get to the finish line, but also it's for as good stewards of knowing what public policy is going to be, to give us incentives or to penalize us either way, we need to be on top of this issue. And so, Dr. Law, I think this just needs to be something, almost a permanent part of our board agenda, is what we're doing, because it's nothing we could tackle at one board meeting, or it's going to have to be a part of every board meeting, and maybe, I think it's a good idea, putting a student success and achievement report as part of each board meeting. If it's just a few minutes long, that's fine, just to make sure that we're following this topic, because we just can't ignore it.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments on this, Evelyn or Terry?
Yeah, I'm coming. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the presentation and your comments. I studied Dr. Law's learning plan last night, and I'm looking forward, I've got several questions as we start to get through this, but amazed at how it is almost perfectly aligned with a lot of these challenges that we just talked about. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. And I know it's later in the agenda, but I want to mention it now. I want to commend you for your reaching out to Gibbs. You know, there's a lot of great things that are happening in-house here that the rest of the world never knows about. But when I pick up the paper and read great things about SPC and the efforts that you made to help that process, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Very nice, Terry. Also, continuing along with my lengthy report today, which I don't think we'll get this lengthy in the future, but we got a great operational audit. Well, Dr. Law asked me to come meet with the auditors in the exit conference, and you know, Dick and I just enjoy exit conferences and auditing so much, especially when we have such a nice audit. Basically, the findings were of such an insignificant, not only amount, but had to do with how we're collecting social security numbers, we just, just a, not even violating thing, they're just saying, the things make things a little bit better. And so we've accepted their audit findings and are taking action on them. But boy, my compliments to everyone on the staff who make these clean audits possible. I know it takes a tremendous amount of work throughout the whole year, procedure-wise, to have such a nice audit, and it's something Mr. Johnson and I get excited about. I have a very pleasant opportunity now, and Dr. Law, I would ask you, come help me make these presentations. I don't know how we left out some people in this, but we did over the years. You know, this board, and I, and I thank Mr. Johnson for this, because he's the one who started this. When we all, a few of us came on this board at the same time, back in 1999, he said, you know, "We shouldn't have just one chairman forever on this board, we should rotate it and give each person here a chance to be chair." And everyone on this board has served as chair at one time or another, but not everyone got recognized afterwards with a plaque, and they should have been. And Mrs. Bellarakas received a plaque for her service previously, but I don't know how we left you out, Mr. Johnson, out of this, but we did. And you served, this is just for the time recently, we're not going back and history, okay? But for the time you served, since we all came on together from July of 99 to July of 2001, and again, for serving as chair from July of 2007 to July of 2008, we want to recognize you and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your service at St. Petersburg College.
Thank you.
And then, then the person who deserves, unfortunately, as Dr. Cutler used to say, "This is not real gold," but this person deserves a real gold gobble for his service last year to this board, because it was tremendously demanding time to be chair of this board. And as I mentioned, there couldn't be a person who was more appropriate, and God sent us to preside over us during that time, because he did an absolutely magnificent job under trying circumstances. And the part that amazes me, he always says he doesn't enjoy it. He was glad he did it. I shouldn't say the word "enjoy," maybe that wasn't right. But he appreciated the experience of doing that and providing that leadership. And it really was amazing leadership. He was a magnificent leader for us, and he's going to serve on this board hopefully for a long time. But we want to thank Terry Brad for his chairmanship from July of 2009 to July of 2010. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, board members, you get to give your reports. Then, do you have anything to bring up?
No, I just make one comment about your audit report. Reminded me of what's a net picking auditors who didn't find anything, so they had to look hard to find something. And I, too, would like to congratulate the staff on keeping this college in the position it's in, because it's very meaningful, because we know some colleges do not get clean reports. In fact, they give some disastrous reports. So I want to pass my appreciation on to the staff that particularly works on these things.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Bellarakas.
Well, I want to also thank the Audit Committee. Y'all did a wonderful job. And I want to say, if it wasn't for our faculty and our staff, we wouldn't be in this position. And thank y'all very much.
Terry, do you have any board report?
Nothing else. I'm just going to save some comments for the learning plan.
I appreciate you mentioning about the Gibbs High School matter, too. That was very favorable for our college and showed tremendous leadership on Dr. Law's part.
Dr. Law, I will have plenty to say. Two quick things. The follow-up to the University of South Florida meeting, we have proceeded to schedule a much broader staff-to-staff meeting, and it's in the works. I don't know the exact date. In fact, we have it scheduled. So our senior staff and some others will be meeting with their senior staff to go through some detailed parts. Secondly, last night, the four of the Bay Area presidents, Judy Ganshaaf, Kathy Johnson, Ken Atwater, myself, had dinner and have hatched a plan that will unfold over the next 60 to 90 days, including some high-visibility coordination. So stay tuned, we're going to reach out to get a few more people involved. But everybody is pushing in the same direction, so some good things there.
And then, push you on that point, can you share your idea about actually forming a...
Yes, sir. That's what we're working on, is an alliance, a Bay Area alliance, that would send a very strong signal of how our colleges are cooperating together, where students would be nurtured through the high school years into the appropriate, the one that makes the most sense for them. So the inventory of baccalaureate programs that we all have are available to all students. The articulation between our institutions is not just the state minimum, but in fact, an enhanced articulation, heading towards some additional work on student learning plans, where students can line up very quickly as they're headed toward USF, perhaps. So there are a number of things that are in the works, and it's going to happen, the announcement will happen before the end of this year, and it'll be in place by this time next year as well.
And I know we're all public institutions, I know we'll have a legislative commonality, too, but I hope, too, at some point, this could turn a little broader as far as with the five, especially Eckhart, our friend.
Excuse me, they are invited. I underspoke. And I should tell you that President Eastman was in my office this week, and we had a lengthy meeting about possibilities. And we have very different missions, but it was a very cordial and positive meeting. They may assist us in some of the community areas where they have a high number of interested volunteers. We think that maybe the next step at Gibbs is to include them in part of it. So we'll see how...
Because we have like, they're outstanding alums on this board, so it'll make sure...
As a follow-up to that, I ran into Don Eastman, and he said that you had, he had had a very good meeting, and he was pleased to get together with you and see what could be worked out.
And that will be the Bay Area Bowtie Alliance.
Because that's one element that I don't think we've ever had a great deal of success in working with Eckhart College.
Oh, I thought you were going to say wearing bow ties.
I guess we're all going to have to start adopting bow ties if it's, do we have to? When we do, can we get the clip on, so you don't have to tie them?
As we move on, one other thing.
Good segue.
Superintendent Jansen and I had hoped this month to have kind of a home-and-home visit, and for scheduling reasons, she'll be with us next month, just as a, to appear at the meeting, and we can have a little bit of dialogue. And then I'm going to appear at their meeting in October to send a signal of cooperation. And we are in fact working on some programmatic things, but those are still preliminary. Okay? Thank you, sir.
The building naming thing, is that something that we're going to schedule for next month?
Next month. Next month. Next month, I'll have a report, I think, November, before we get serious about it. But we've done some work on that, it's not quite ready.
Okay. We knew that, we didn't even need more time, but I just wanted an update. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? I actually have a correction. You know, we made a very big note that Terry and I made nice comments about Kim Corey and the wonderful job she does with graduation, it never appeared in here. So you left that out of the minutes, so I want to make sure that gets added to the minutes, the compliments that Terry and I gave on graduation and how you lead that job, Kim. So that's going to be my correction to the minutes, even if you don't accept it, Kim. Any other corrections or additions?
Move approval, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Lang, do you have any report for us?
I have no report at this time. I've been somewhat involved in the possible acquisition of the church in Clearwater, and that's on the agenda in new business.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McKenzie?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I should make sure the board hears directly from me, but Mr. McKenzie has decided there are greener pastures to be had, and at the end, has submitted his resignation effective at the end of this calendar year. Sid has, we will certainly take time for the appropriate recognitions, but he was kind enough to help me by staying on and helping the church, and he's been enormously helpful, not surprisingly. But I did want you to hear that Sid has handed me his resignation, and one of these days I'll get around to accepting it.
I would just move we don't accept it.
I think he beat those last.
He's been such a valuable asset, because he has, he has extensive knowledge of the system from his time spent Tallahassee, and I know he's been a tremendous help to this college. And if he decides to go and we do decide to accept his resignation, he'll be served.
He certainly will be. And we'll make sure we appropriately recognize Mr. McKenzie, but thank you for all the service you've given this college, and continue to through December.
We'll now have our provost report, starting with J.C. Brock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Over the past several years, we have put a significant amount of effort and emphasis on the development and refinement of our emergency management plan throughout the college. Unfortunately, these are one of those things that you don't realize how important they are until you need them. And since we are in the midst of the hurricane season, heading into the second half, which is usually more impactful to the Florida region than the first half, I thought it was timely to bring you up to speed on what has been done. One of the nice things that we've accomplished recently is we have been able to pull together all the many different disjointed pieces of this plan into one location. And we will be rolling out a website on our college's main system that will have all of these items together, both for faculty, staff, and student use, and make it available to them, and everything that we have developed will be readily available. Since 2007, when the governor convened a group of people and developed recommendations for campus safety and security in this area, we have complied with all of those mandates and developed a significant amount of activities and programs and initiatives. One of those has been the development of the Emergency Management Council, which convenes regularly, gives recommendations of President Law as far as implementation of policies, procedures. If you recall, there was a rule change that allowed us to operate that council as an advisory council to the President Law, so we would not have to change a rule on any time any particular changes were going to be made. We completed a comprehensive review and update of our college's emergency plan, and just completed the first annual that will go back to the council, and then will be presented to our provost, our cabinet level, and then ultimately to you, which we hope to do annually. We do not want to develop a plan and place it on a shelf, we want it to be a living, dynamic document that will be revised and continually updated, and hopefully imparted to all of the college families, so that it can be appropriately used. You might have seen recently, on September 9th, we rolled out an app for iPhones that was rolled out at the county level, that you can download an application and utilize it in your emergency management plan. I believe Dr. Law has it on his phone. But two other items that I want to share with you that has been the result of our efforts, and these are, you'll see these throughout the college. The first is just a quick flip chart, that's in every classroom, throughout every building, of given a particular incident, how we might respond for faculty and students to have a very quick guideline, if you will. And then the second is our, the plan that we have developed for assessment of challenging issues relating to students, faculty, or staff. And it's been a plan that we've put together and has been very successful with the help of our General Counsel's Office and Susan Gardens. of our General Counsel's Office and Susan Gardner specifically, that we've been able to train and inform each site, each campus, of a team of leadership of how they might intervene with challenges that they face, both from students, faculty, and staff. Hopefully, very soon, within days, this website will be available, all the resources I've mentioned, as well as many others, will be available to you and available for your review and certainly we would welcome your comments and input if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Brock?
I think this is very good.
It's really good.
Yeah, I just was leading through it and it, you apparently covered almost everything that could happen and we know that educational institutions have been targeted and I think the trustees will all feel more comfortable knowing that we've got something that students and faculty and probably administrators can respond to quickly.
Let me available in every class, really a great piece of work.
Well, one of the biggest accomplishments under Bill Gray's leadership is we have conducted exercises and tabletop exercises on each site during the past year and we are now preparing to interact with our local public safety entities and do a college-wide exercise during the next coming year so we can test, you know, you always learn more about what you do wrong in exercises and that's what we hope to accomplish in the next year, is a college-wide exercise and a continuous evaluation of how we can improve.
Thank you, J.C.
Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Thank you.
Conferently, Carney from the Tarpon Campus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What I have prepared to share with you this morning, a few minutes on, is student enrollment growth at the Tarpon Springs campus, some of the challenges that enrollment growth has brought to us. And the good news is that for many of the, all of those challenges really, the ones that are current, we have solutions that are in various stages of progress. The chart that's in the middle, the bar chart, shows two key measures of student enrollment growth. The head counts on the left-hand side and on the right, on the right side is student semester hours. And both of those are key measures of student enrollment growth on all of our campuses. At Tarpon Springs, we've grown from 4,574 students in 2006 to almost 5,800 students in 2010. And that's a growth over that period, five-year period of 26.7%. The student semester hours, which is a measure of credit hours per class and the number of students in that class, grew from 26,500 to almost 38,000, well over 38,000, so that's a growth rate of 43.7%. Now, if you compare that to the college growth, the colleges also grow robustly, so not to say that Tarpon Springs is the only campus that's growing this fast, but the thing that set Tarpon as apart, I think, is the fact that, I think that we've approached our practical maximum in terms of classrooms available, in terms of office space available for faculty and staff. I've looked at all the data, one of the datas I get on my desk is a room chart and that chart shows every classroom that we have available for lower division class assignments and from 8:00 in the morning until about 3:00 in the afternoon, we are practically full. We have another, we have a lull about 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, but we start again in 5:00 and we go until 9:00 at night. This year, we, because of the growth, we added a net of three additional full-time faculty and we've added a net of 40 part-time faculty. And so office space for faculty is becoming a challenge for us as well, we're not at a crisis point, but we can use some relief. Parking on our campus, during peak hours, from 9:00 o'clock until around 1:00 in the afternoon, we have significant parking congestion. Michael Carter was at our campus a few weeks ago and he witnessed that, about three people that was in our meeting were late because they were riding around for 10 or 15 minutes looking for parks. And if our staff and faculty are riding around looking for parks, that means our students are also riding around looking for parks.
Conferently, may I ask you a question on that? I thought the part that, that's along US-19, are there spaces there, are they just too far away from where people...
Exactly right, and that's part of the solution. The, this, this little diagram over to the side is a smaller model of the Olympia Building and to answer your question, Mr. Chair, when we, when Dr. Sally Naylor's operation moved into this blue part, that's where we had the Tarpon Out Party, that's the construction project that has come before this board several times in the past year, that's 40,000 square feet that Dr. Naylor is going to get, she's going to free up the next two bullets on the solution. The current College of Education building has five classrooms and a number of office spaces, that's going to become available to the lower division, which is where we're having the problems with classrooms. In addition to that, this part of this diagram here is called the east wing of the Olympia Building and that's, US-19 is this way, classroom is this way. All this space out here is parking space that's not fully utilized right now. So when we move classes, Dr. Naylor's operations into that blue part, and we move the lower division into the east wing part, this parking is going to shift that way. And so there are six classrooms in the east wing that we're going to pick up, there are five classrooms in the current College of Education building that we're going to ship, pick up as well. One of the other projects that we're working on is we're working with Susan and Michael Carter and the rest of the facilities organization in looking at how we can better utilize this space right here. This space right here was previously occupied by HR and Central Records, has not been occupied for the past three years that I've been there. And so we're looking at early preliminary design and cost analysis on how we can better utilize that space to add a couple of new classrooms and we've talked to the president about that and we will, at the end of that analysis that we're doing now in the next month or two, we will bring that back to the president and to the president's cabinet and to this forum as appropriate. And then long-term, our plan is of course to develop a campus master plan, we've already started that process, we have our team in place for the scheduling place, we're hoping to complete the long-term plan by April of next year. So, Mr. Chair and the board, we have robust growth on the campus, we know what our challenges are and we have solutions in place to address those challenges. That's my report and I'll be happy to ask any additional questions you might have.
Questions for Dr. Carney?
Don't we own a lot, some land adjacent to the college?
We own, I always thought it was 80 acres, but we have 105 acres, I checked with facilities recently, so we have plenty of land to build. And part of our campus master planning process is going to be how best to utilize that to handle our long-term growth.
Any other question? Dr. Carney, I want to say you're going to win the award for best use of a slide. I don't think any of us would have guessed that would be campus math on the bottom there. That's incredible. Thanks. Dr. Oliver?
Don't encourage the creativity. That's just too funny.
It's impossible to follow the silver-tongued one and be as eloquent as he is. My understanding was that this exercise was for each provost to use one slide, to highlight something about the campus using one number. And so I figured that since the Seminole campus is the perfect 10, this number alone would suffice. Now you know why my career as a stand-up comedian mathematically is off. The number does have significance though, at the Seminole campus. Last time I talked to you about curriculum and I like to use this brief time to talk about extracurricular, those programs and activities outside the classroom which further engage students in the life of the campus and are known to improve satisfaction and can retention is one of those factors. We have, the number represents the 10 clubs and formal organizations that we have on the campus. Some are small, a dozen plus students or so, others involve a lot of students, like the campus chapter of Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society, which has over 100 members. The first meeting, the Hospitality Club, last week drew 35 students and SGA regularly has that many members attending their weekly meetings. I don't want to sound like the oxy-clean pitch man, but the number 10 is good for a limited time only. The windsurfing and music appreciation clubs are currently forming and that'll bring us to a dozen and the entrepreneurship club will make it a baker's dozen by later this year. But the clubs themselves are only the tip of the iceberg when it comes to programs and activities outside the classroom which provide opportunities for student life and student involvement and student leadership. These clubs and organizations sponsor events that fill our calendars. I believe every Thursday during the campus activity period, which at Seminole is 12:30 to 2:00 in the afternoon on Thursdays. Between now and the end of the year is already booked for luncheon learns on topics requested by students, for example, dealing with stress, or special luncheons and presentations like the one on Constitution Day that Professor Freitas provided in the U.P. lobby last week. We, we have a variety of presentations for different groups and organizations, the Hispanic Heritage Month, African-American History Month, there's an SPC Toastmasters Club that meets on campus each week, we celebrate major events like student involvement in the City of Seminole's Field of Screams event for the neighborhood kids at the Recreation Center next door, we participate in the Chamber of Commerce's Bright Before Your Eyes lighted holiday parade, and the annual Community Power Parade each spring. There is a Hanging of the Greens kickoff to the holiday season, tradition on campus where a new ornament is hung each year to represent a significant event in the life of the campus for the past year. Each spring, the annual semi-awards program showcases the best in digital and new media student productions and during the annual awards ceremony each April, nearly $20,000 in scholarship money is distributed. The Seminole soccer team has won the intramural championship for two years in a row and I learned just yesterday that a flag football competition is starting up on campus later this week and an impromptu game of volleyball or frisbee is liable to pop up at any time. These descriptions are for Seminole, but you'll find this kind of activity on all of our campuses. I'm going to run out of time before I run out of events, so let me close with two other numbers that I could have used today, 12 and 42. 12 is the percentage increase of on-campus students, not counting online, at Seminole this fall. The, and we're up 42% in on-campus students over the past three years. We're not the same campus we were three years ago. That's a lot of students at a full-service campus. Activities and programs outside the classroom have become woven into the tapestry of campus life and complement our outstanding faculty, instruction, and instructional support to bring us that new energy and that new fuel. And as always, we appreciate the support of the board and the president in these activities. Thank you.
Very good.
Dr. Oliver, I'm going to ask you a question off of your topic here, just because of the distance education. What is the current size for our distance in classes?
They, they range in size from the standard course listing, every course at St. Pete College has a standard course size, so for nursing, that may be 12, for communications it may be 26, mathematics 30, a lot of the social science courses are up to 40. And so the size of the distance learning class are the size of the regular class capped at 35, so there's no distance learning class higher than 35.
Do you have an opinion as far as size of class and student success as far as your studies, you know this issue a heck of a lot better than most people in the room here, so...
Typically, good online instruction, there is, there is a limit beyond which you can't be successful, but we find that good online classes mean good interaction between faculty and students, strong instructional material, and ongoing assessment interaction. So rather than class size alone, there are a lot of factors that provide good online education. We've worked very hard, the class size issue notwithstanding, to make sure we have all of those best practices built into our classes.
We're going to make the student success as part of our ongoing agenda and that's probably one of the topics we need to talk about is distance education, what our success rates are and how, how we can improve them if there's, if there's, what studies you've done as to which ones, maybe there's certain courses which don't lend itself well to distance education and we thought they would and they didn't. I think this board really needs to be educated a lot more on that topic.
And there's some techniques that can be used to improve those retention rates. Worth committing to doing that.
Back to the Seminole campus, any questions for Dr. Oliver? Thanks for the presentation.
Thanks as always.
Thank you.
Mrs. Omer at the Downtown Center. Morning.
When we met in July, I shared information with you about the tremendous growth of the downtown and midtown campuses. We're continuing to grow at a very rapid rate. At the beginning of the fall term, we had 2,600 students enrolled in classes downtown and 500 students enrolled at Midtown. Today, I would like to focus on the demographics of each site and what we're doing as a college to respond to the unique needs of our students. You can see from this first slide that SBC Downtown serves a high percentage of minority students, 30% of whom are black. At Midtown, the next slide will show you, black students represent 76% of the student body. This is significant because college-wide, black students represent 12% of the student population. Why is it important to know this? What assumptions can we make about the potential needs of the students that we serve at both sites? We know that many of these students are in need of college prep classes and tutoring services. Many of our students lack access to computers in the home and may need technical assistance to complete their assignments. Many students are financial aid recipients and many of the students lack support outside of the classroom. So what are we doing to address these needs and promote student success? You'll see a couple of brochures that were left at your place. One is the Women on the Way program that we launched in the spring at Midtown and it's been very successful. The other brochure in front of you is our Student Activities and Academic Resource Guide and if you open that up, it will show you the various tutoring services that we have available as well as academic advising at Midtown. At Downtown, we have increased our tutoring efforts and our library support. At Midtown, we have increased the number of hours for tutoring support in writing and mathematics. We've also, we also have a librarian on-site one day a week that helps students with their research. We've expanded our academic advising at Midtown from 20 hours to 30 hours a week. We have lab assistants in the computer lab to provide technical support and we're in the process of reinstituting our laptop loan program. Additionally, we have student life and leadership coordinator that encourages participation in student activities and provides leadership for our Women on the Way program. Again, looking at the brochures, you'll see that the first person that will be speaking to our students is our own Dr. Tanja Williams, she will kick it off, September the 28th next week, followed by, many of you may remember, Myrtle Williams, retired Associate Provost at the St. Pete Gibbs Campus. So we've got a nice fall lineup of speakers for our students at Midtown. Other ways that we're responding to the needs of our students is by expanding our facilities. At Midtown, we have a brand-new multipurpose room that serves as a learning support commons for tutoring, also serves as a student lounge for student activity events and a community room for Women on the Way presentations and other community events. A new, larger learning support center is currently under construction at our Downtown Center. And we've also implemented a book loan program at both sites to help students have access to textbooks. What are some of our course offerings that reflect the demographics of the students we serve? Well, we offer African-American history at both of our sites, at Downtown and Midtown in the spring we'll be offering African-American literature at these sites. In terms of faculty recruitment, working with deans, we strive to hire black faculty members to encourage support and, I think I just got cut off, and serve as role models for our students and we work hard at that, we have Gold Maxwell, Willie Felton, Vera Spragons, all serving as faculty and we do a number of community outreach programs at Midtown. Future plans is to continue to look for opportunities to better serve the needs of our unique student body. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Oliver?
Question, on both campuses, what do you think the maximum need would be as far as where the campuses could be student population-wise? In other words, we're sitting here now and we're seeming to be growing on both of these just, just as fast as we can, well, obviously you're going to run out of space. If you doubled the space, would you still have as strong a demand? Looking into the future?
Looking into the future, at Downtown, we've got the capacity right now to double where we are. At Midtown, we have maxed out the current building as it stands.
So if, at the, but if you, to say you doubled Midtown with more space, would you double the student population?
All I can say is, you know, at this point, they continue to come because I think they're being well... being well-served, and I think there is potential for growth.
Well, access, both of these, the one downtown is served by local transportation because the bus stop is right close. Midtown, I assume some could walk, but there's probably still cars that bring them. And if that's a potential growth area as far as access goes, then maybe we as a board should address that issue stronger than we have in the past and suggest more resources be devoted to those two areas. Because if there's need there, and we're able to serve students, and that's what we're all about, then what do we need to do? We somehow need to answer that call.
Well, I think you've hit a key point. I think access is tremendous for both sites. When I look at the zip code areas that we're pulling from, I would call it the 275 corridor. And there's good PSTA bus access as well as automobile access to both sites. So I think, again, thank you for your support and as we move forward.
Well, keep up the good work, because obviously, it's growing. Thank you, Mrs. Olmer.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Johnson, your point, and this is something, we've talked about the growth, obviously, it's been a common theme of everyone's presentation for the last two meetings. At the same time, I was looking just the other day, I love our fact book that we do produce once a year, and it gives all the historical trends of this college. And it shows the enrollment since the college began back in 1927. And during the '90s, almost, I think it was for a period of seven or eight years, we had continuous declining enrollment, which was due to the economy. The economy being so good, people found jobs easily, employers were hiring people and training them themselves. And I think we have to be careful with getting, you know, looking at where, as the economy's starting to turn maybe, and things get better, you will see, I think, if historical trends hold true, a decline of enrollment again. And I think that's combined with the fact that the K-12 system knows how many people are in each of those grades and how many people they project to graduate in the next how many years. I think maybe one of these sessions, we need to be educated as a board as to where they're seeing their enrollment and their graduation classes for the next 10 years, and maybe factor something for the economy improving at a slow pace and seeing if historical trends hold true, what that means to our enrollment and factor whatever. I think you used to be institutional research at one time, didn't you?
Yes, I did. I'd rather do this than my regular...
Yeah. But I mean, we need that type of information because we can't just sit here and say we want to build buildings or grow or add campuses or add land without having the facts to show, you know? We can't base it on what today's picture is because tomorrow's picture's different from today.
There's also a factor here, I think, Mr. Chairman, that the minority population is stepping up to the plate for education in ways they haven't in the past. And I think that's because we've made it more accessible to them. And I would assume that part will continue.
I think that's one of the factors that may be owing to this report.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on to our number, number seven, I believe. And I would like to entertain the motion that we approve all items C and D1. And we can discuss them after the motion. Oh, six?
You passed up the new agenda.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Terry. I appreciate that. Who's here? Oh, we're here.
We're having a hard to help us. We, I know you have, at times past, been provided information, but at the start of every semester, we will provide you with, I think, just the basic, you know, where are we? How many? What's new? What are we seeing? And certainly, this board, I'm enormously impressed with the insight already, just your questions and everything. Now, let's run through this. We still have a ways to go to the finish line here. We have two presentations. One is the overall opening day enrollment. So when the bell rang to start school on Monday, August 23rd, this is what we looked like.
Very good. One moment. Mr. Lang, are you under any time restriction on the issue that you have to bring up? Do you have to leave early? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Oliver, thank you for this opportunity to share this important information this morning. As Dr. Oliver mentioned, this is a snapshot of our enrollment on day one, August 23rd of this year. And we are only talking right now about credit, not non-credit, and we're talking about, for the most part, unduplicated headcount data. And I'd just like to thank Doug Duncan and A.I.S. under his leadership and Jesse Coraggio for making this presentation possible. The first slide you see here is our unduplicated headcount students. 32,454 students enrolled day one this fall. And it's broken down, full-time and part-time, and you can see that the major increases in our part-time students. So this goes back to Mr. Burke, your concern that you brought forward earlier this morning about these students needing the most handholding, so to speak. Part-time is defined as fewer than 12 credit hours, and the 11% overall increase...
Is that our definition, our financial aid definition? Or is there a financial aid definition?
There is a financial aid definition. I believe they're both one and the same. Part-time is fewer than 12.
This is normally now, the 12 hours is the...
The first one.
That's in all discussions I'm aware of.
Thank you.
The next slide is degree objective. Of those 32,000 students, how many are A.A.? How many are workforce? We're defining workforce as A.S. and certificate-seeking students. How many are baccalaureate? And how many are non-degree-seeking, that are undeclared? You can see the tremendous increase in workforce. Students are coming to us, they have a desire to come in, get a credential, and go to work.
Now, if I understood Dr. Oliver's comment, and I want to be clear on this, workforce are not counted into that success?
Some would, some wouldn't. If they are degree-seeking, A.S., A.A.S., those would. If some certificates might, you know, it's nuanced, Mr. Chairman, okay? The undeclared would not, okay?
The workforce people, though, are not...
These are credit-based workforce. I guess I was looking to the more casual kind of in-service workforce support. So I think Mr. Johnson took a course that enhanced his skills in computer-related areas. Very important, but not part of this discussion.
So workforce here is like A.S. degree?
Yes, sir. These are degree-seeking...
Eligible for financial aid.
Eligible for financial aid, yes.
And the non-degree-seeking students include all of those that are here for personal enrichment, the dual-enrolled students, collegiate high school students, early college students, transient students who are home institution, is not S.P.C. Now, if we look at enrollment type, how many of them, how many of the students that are here today are continuing, we're defining continuing as those who have been enrolled in the last year. New students speaks for itself, and re-admit students, students who've been out for more than a year who are coming back. And you can see a 15% increase in continuing students. It's indicative to me when I see that, that students want to come in, they want to persist and finish their credential faster than in prior years. How many students are receiving financial aid and the increase there, full-time versus part-time? You can see, as with our overall part-time enrollment, the huge increase in financial aid recipients in the part-time arena. Mike Bennett showed me that he's already awarded more in dollars this academic year than all of last academic year.
Mike, that number was 58 million, $59 million for the fall semester? What was our dispersment?
Our dispersment was 58.3...
$58.3 million we dispersed to students last Monday in the form of financial aid.
Where does all that, those funds come from? What kind of grants are we talking about?
Wait a minute. We're talking about all types of aid, federal, state, and college money that was dispersed on accounts.
I would assume most of it's federal money. Is that correct?
Yes, we're 90% federal.
90% is fed.
That's the Pell program?
Yes, Pell, S.E.O.G., A.C.G., and the loans are all federal.
Yeah, because our own foundation contributes some, but it's still small.
58 million is a very big number. It's very meritorious work on the part-time side.
Mr. Bennett, what percentage of our students who are full-time, part-time, these students are receiving financial aid? Is it, were we up to 60%?
Yes. I would say last year, we were total students, 66% received some type of financial aid.
Wow.
Mike's got his hands right. I really want to engage your issue about full-time, part-time, because it's really a critical issue. One of the nuances with part-time, though, is the expansion of summer Pell's so that part-time students can take, can take, can get Pell grants now throughout the year. So there's a very improved way for students to get Pell and be part-time and still make progress.
Might I just add that your foundation, through gifts from the community and other people giving scholarships, give a billion dollars a year.
Evelyn?
I want to ask, if someone gets financial aid and then quits school, what happens? Do you get the money back? Where, you know? If one gets financial aid and then doesn't go to school, or just starts and quits?
Well, it depends on when that occurs, but if a student stops attending and has received the money, how that would be looked at later on would be in terms of their academic progress because if they're not going to school, earning credits, or maintaining a certain GPA, they can't continue to receive the funds.
Then, how do you get the money back? Or you don't, or you lose it?
You wouldn't if they dropped before the 60% point. You would calculate how much of the money they're entitled to and they earn, but if it's after the 60% point, you're not taking any money back. And that's only for students who totally withdraw from everything.
Yeah.
Or how about if they never start?
They wouldn't get it, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't...
I don't think they would get it.
Yeah, if they were awarded financial aid and never started and weren't in attendance, the aid would be removed.
Hello?
There was a question here in the past about liability to the college because of mishandling or however you want to say it, where students got financial aid and ended up dropping, and the federal government was holding the college responsible for that.
I'm feeling a great need to bring this issue back in full, Mr. Chairman, because, quite frankly, the feds have passed all of that responsibility to us now, and I think our exposure is even higher than it's been in the past. And what I'd like to do is bring that back, Mr. Johnson, if I could, as a, I think it's a policy issue for the board.
Because that all has changed in recent years. I have a similar one with student loans, though. Where you've got a percentage success factor, and you get penalized if you fall below a certain factor.
There are, but we are now, we are now the lender.
Right.
As opposed to banks being the lender, as you recall. And it used to be that we were downstream for the non-recovery, and we're now in the first position for recovery or non-recovery.
Well, is that different from Pell, though? I thought, is Pell not...
Getting above my...
They're separate, right? They're not under those same percentages, are they?
Yeah, there's no different treatment of Pell grants or loans in this.
Really? Wow.
Big shift.
Well, if we have an increased potential liability, then I think we should, you're right, Mr. President, to bring it back to us and give us some idea of what that liability factor is, as to how we move forward and what we do with maybe our own policies. And I think we could afford a tremendous payback to the federal government.
We have some exposure. Let's tee that one up if I could, as a real discussion. It's a very important point.
And also, just not for us, but that's a, you know, we're part of these associations. So if there's federal policy modifications, we need to help make that happen.
Thanks.
Mr. Bennett, I think we're going to be seeing a lot of you this next year.
He knows what he's talking about.
This next slide illustrates our enrollment by ethnicity. I think it's very important to note the increase in African-American students, 29, almost 30% year-over-year. I think that Mr. Burke and Mr. Gibbons have their hands in that increase, as well as Yvonne Olmer down at Midtown and Downtown. I kind of drill down into these figures a little bit more. Of that nearly 1,000 student increase year-over-year, African-American students, roughly half, 497 of those are enrolled Downtown and Midtown.
Are Hispanic students mainly at the Clearwater campus?
I do not know. I'd be remiss to guess.
We'll find out.
This slide shows student age, and it's important to note the increases in our older students.
I shouldn't have taken those classes.
You're right, you should do that over there.
There's another chart for the 60. No, no, go back to that if you would. Just jump back quickly, okay? Because this chart probably would be better described if we had done it on a percent basis. If you notice, the 21 or under is, for all practical purposes, flat, and we're showing it with 700 student increase. But if you look at some of the percent increases elsewhere, pretty sizable increases for those who are above 25 years old.
Well, that relates to job market.
Yeah, there it is. You've got 1,200 and 900. You have more than 2,000 students above the age of 25, so...
But that can, I think, tells you that you were talking about the economy and less students. There probably isn't that big a number in that 26 to 35. So our enrollment may continue under 21 and 22 to 25, and then over 36 maybe. But the unemployed probably have fallen to the 26 to 35. Just another factor that we're throwing in.
We've retained a very sophisticated demographic fund to assist us with some of this very discussion, you know? What are the trends? What are the guidelines? What can we discern for each of our campuses? So we're overlaying a more sophisticated demographic analysis on the campus master plans, and you'll see that come back to you. We've retained some very high-level expertise.
All right. In terms of gender, you can see we still have far more female students than we have male students. We are making some inroads. As a percent of total, last year, our male students represented 37.6. This fall, almost 39%. We have a long way to go here.
Now, you can't distinguish between male and female for a certain amount of people?
I believe that that is an optional field on the admissions application, and some students choose not to fill in.
Okay.
This slide illustrates how the students are taking courses. You can see we've had an increase in students who are only taking online courses, but the main increase is students who are taking blended. They're taking some face-to-face courses and some online or blended mode of instruction. I think it's important to note that, and we've shared the statistic with you in the past, that 7884 online-only represents about a quarter of our students only taking online This slide shows student headcount increases by what we call academic organization or academic department, and those departments that had the highest year-over-year headcount increases. And you can see the Fine and Applied Arts, the College Prepitor, Math and Mathematics had the highest headcount year-over-year increases. The Fine and Applied Arts, you'll see in a moment, Humanities, World Religion courses in that area, as well as programs like the MIRA, the Music Industry Recording Arts Program at St. Pete Gibbs Campus.
What's L.D. and U.D.?
Lower Division, Upper Division.
Okay.
Thank you.
But it's surprising that there's real increases in math.
And I think that is the impact of having the baccalaureate-level courses, where students need to be better prepared in some of the basic areas, math being one, as they move into some of, if you're going in the business sequence or in some of the other baccalaureate sequences. So I think those are complementary.
Have we seen an increase in remediation courses?
Yes, you'll see that on this next slide. Dr. Oliver, I thought it would be interesting to show you... you what are our top ten courses in terms of student enrollment. And here they are. You see Fall 2010 in that column labeled Students Enrolled. You see where it ranks, where that course ranked the prior year. Interesting to note that of these top ten courses, they represent thirty percent of our overall enrollment. These are our Bread and Better courses. These are Composition 1 and 2, Speech, Psychology, Intermediate Algebra, Elementary Algebra, Psychology, I think I said that, American Government, Ethics. So this is where I think we want to focus and make sure that we've got this right.
Ten courses describe thirty percent of our enrollment, and what did you tell me, Pat? We offer nine hundred courses? We offer a total of nine hundred courses, but the top ten describe almost a third of the enrollment. So as we focus on improved success, my success says, let's focus here, this is where we make the most throughput.
Item six and seven, they have course numbers, zero zero two four and zero zero one two, what does that?
That's remedial.
That's remediation?
That's the remedial math sequence. We have five thousand student enrollments in remedial math, ten thousand in college-level math, so it's an enormous challenge for us. Five thousand students in remedial math.
You know, what might help us, you're using acronyms and numbers and they don't really mean a whole lot to me, but you tell me what they are, they do. Maybe for future presentations, you could describe the course in a manner that we would be familiar with.
Good suggestion, sorry, that's, you.
Thank you.
We're not acronyms.
You don't know PLS 2041? My goodness.
Yeah, I don't. I'm sorry.
Neither do I. Any course that said zero zero is remediation.
Remediate, yes, sir.
Okay.
So the first digit gives you, the key one is first level, two, three, four, but the zero is the mid.
I'm not going to retain that, Mr. Chairman, maybe they'll spill it out.
No, we're, but we'll put the course name, that would be much more important to you.
Okay, thank you.
In summary, I know where the observations is, increases year-over-year, part-time students, baccalaureate students, workforce students, students over the age of twenty-five, minority students, and students receiving financial aid.
Okay.
Next presentation?
That is the, okay, we're going to make a shift here now. That is opening day, so that's the thirty-two thousand, how many men, how many women, how many old, how many young, how many students of color, those sorts of things. Here is the first presentation on something that we'll be watching, and it goes directly to the agenda that you just described, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do is to have this board and all of us follow a group of students through the institution and find out who really makes it to the end. What can we learn about how students get through our institution? So the way we'll do that is take a picture of the students who are first time in college. These are students who came to us in August and had never been to college before. They, we own them. They are under all of our guidance, all of our nurture, all of our support. It's a smaller subset, but it's intended to give us some insight as to who makes it through our institution. Each semester, we'll report back on how this group is doing, who's dropping out, who's staying with us, what can we describe with the group, what the success patterns look like. So everybody has the same information. It is, it's highly beneficial to give us signals as to who's not here, because it's not state reporting. The state just says each, each time they take a picture, who's here today? We send them a thing, everything's good. There's no sense of who's falling off, who's really making it to the end. So, so the first picture is really just who's in this group. And then in January, we'll tell you what's been the progress of this group through the first semester, how many have already dropped out, how many are successful, what do they look like GPA. So if we can start, we'll give you a, you know, this is just to set up the schedule here, so.
Are you going to retain information as to why they've had problems?
Yes, and you'll see.
So we can address it?
That's exactly, Mr. Johnson, you're right on it.
You just.
If you're, if you look, we're only going to be following thirty-six hundred students. You see the eleven percent of the total, Fall 2010, the first time in college is three thousand six hundred students. And it lets us do much more sophisticated research on going behind the numbers, Dick, so that's exactly what we hope to do. So the cohort we'll be watching will always be three thousand six hundred forty-seven. You can look at that number every semester, that's what we'll report back to you. Okay?
And these are, these are degree or certificate-seeking, so the doc does not include the non-degree-seeking students.
Right, back to the very issue you were raising as to who, who makes it through. So we've already excluded the non-degree-seeking students, the person who wants one art course. Okay, so this is what they look like. Notice they're split almost perfectly, full-time, part-time. Eighteen hundred, do I have it right? Yeah, eighteen hundred are full-time students, eighteen hundred, oh, gosh, this is better than a lab experiment.
Proportionally, last year, part-time was a third, and this year, they're half. So a huge increase in part-time students.
Is this exercise new to St. Petersburg College? Have others tried it?
I know of one institution that has tried it previously, and it was hugely beneficial for the board and the staff, okay?
Is it a state capital city?
I, it's a distant memory, I can't remember exactly where I stole this from.
And again, like the first presentation, this shows what majors they are enrolled in. You see the number of A A, but again, a huge increase in A S and certificate programs for our first-time-in-college students.
Look at that.
No surprise here, part-time enrollment, receiving financial aid, up a hundred and
Tell us about our economy.
Yeah, it does.
And this mirrors the overall population in the prior presentation. You can see the tremendous increase in our African-American students, fifty-eight percent, our first-time-in-college You see the increases in the older students, twenty-two and above, but interesting, in the twenty-one under, we actually saw a dip. And Mr. Burke, this goes back to your point about projecting Pennsyl County graduates, and that statistic is in the fact book. We have, I think, the next four or five years of projections from the county in terms of what they project the graduates to be, so. And they do project the decline, so I think this is indicative of that. Gender, last year, in terms of first-time in college students, males represented forty-one percent of our total. This year is forty-three and a half percent of our total.
That's good.
And instructional modality, again, the largest increase is in the blended students who are taking a mixture of face-to-face and online courses. I think students want a flexible and convenient schedule. In summary, pretty much same observations as our overall population of students for this cohort, part-time student, huge increase, minority students, older students, and students receiving financial aid. So with that, thank you very much.
So now, we will be back to you in January, and we'll report on those thirty-six hundred students, how many made it through, how many, what grade point profile, what we have learned about that group. And you, we want your questions. It will be critically important for the kinds of insights you're providing. Thank you for your, your attention and your engagement on that.
And Dr. Renard, can you put that book together, the fact book, is that yours?
No, that is Lisa Scherest.
Okay.
Formerly, it was Jesse Coronio.
Well, y'all do an excellent job with that. That's a very great resource to refer to, so thank you for it. Dr. Law, your report?
I sent electronically a copy of the learning plan outcome, and I have printed copies, and we'll share those. It is, it will be online following the presentation this morning. When you interviewed me, you asked me what I would do when I first got here, and I said I would take my time to, to listen and learn as much as I possibly could in the short period of time. And I'm, I'm a quick learner, not a very good listener, so somewhere in the middle here is what I have perceived and what I have learned. It is intended to be my best guidance to you as to where we go for the immediate, short-term future, what I've learned, institutional health, institutional vitality. Some of it has to do with statistics, and it has to do with perception. So I thought the best way to organize it, though, was so that we could take whatever guidance you give me following this, convert it into action strategies that have some timelines attached to them. You'll find, I really like to label everything as a project basis, so I've called this the SPC Initiative 724. I've lumped things into seven focus areas, and then with a little bit of latitude, described twenty-four separate projects within that. You have the handout, Deborah's passing it out. The first of the areas, of course, is student success. Enrollment is up ten percent, we are, eleven percent we ought to declare victory, except I'm concerned that the support systems that measure, our growth over the last three years has approximated twenty-five or thirty percent, and it has outrun our support systems. Students are taking, it's increasingly difficult to get the registration process completed. People are working incredibly hard on the front lines. There is not an ounce of criticism for the people who are serving our students. The support, the overall systems approach has, is about to break down, I think. Students waiting two and three hours to get, to see somebody as a counselor, students having to come back to campus many times to get it completed. The online parts are nowhere near as helpful and supportive as we had hoped or positioned them. So that's, that's a key area that we'll move forward on. As I did my listening posts, student life, and you heard a great presentation by our provost today, to make sure that the college experience is a seat in the classroom, but then support and, and identification beyond the classroom. In fact, Mr. Chairman, if you add to your list this morning, one of the ways that you measure student retention and success is that students have a significant relationship beyond the classroom, not just a parking space, go to class, get in the car, and go home. If they have an identification, they tend to do better, so that's that. I have, with this, started what I think is the holy grail. We should bring the technology to bear with all of our good thinking and all of our assumed, our accumulated knowledge, and we should convert that into individualized learning plans for students. Just as you have a financial plan, and you have a health plan, and you, your life is controlled by things that you make decisions on with interaction with experts, we have to start teaching our students how to do that. They must own their education. We would find this as a way for students to be able to, to move forward much more rapidly with much less interaction from us, but only the interaction that really need, that they really need. So this is, is really the holy grail. Mr. Chairman, I'll stop at any part, I think it might be if I can try to, whatever your disposition is, okay?
Let's go through.
Just go through.
That fine? What do you all?
Yeah, I think, I had a question.
A few questions, but why don't you run through it?
All right, I'll see where you go. The second, increased public accountability, which is in line with where we spent the first half of this morning's meeting. But it is important for me to continue to remind you that the accreditation standards have changed drastically, and that we must be in a position to demonstrate what students have learned. That is a very different game than we have ever played before. This institution has a solid plan to be able to make those demonstrations. It requires a great deal of patience and additional buy-in from our faculty. It is a very different role for faculty, faculty to be part of in the accreditation process. Retention, we've spent the morning talking about that. You know, my definition of student success is that students finish what they start. So I think if we'll just stay with that, we can build on your good efforts. Strategic planning, among, you know, like every other great institution I know, this institution is opportunistic, and I mean that in the very best sense of the word. At times, though, a little, to be sure that things fit within a strategic plan. You, as a board, need to know that we are executing a plan that you have approved, and that you have given us your best guidance as to our key mission components, and we will strengthen, I think, the strategic planning process. We will make that uniform with your budgeting process to everybody's, it's just, it'll be obvious to everybody how that works. Community partnerships, I appreciate your very quick support for our very quick response in reaching out, in going around, shaking as many hands as I can in the first ninety days, and visiting as many places. I think, without criticism, people have asked me to be sure that, that all of those many relationships that have been built over time are refreshed and renewed and re-strengthened. So we will spend some time with our community partnerships, the school district being, I think, the most important of those. Managing growth, to give you an idea, Patrick and I are doing a little, we have grown by more than seventy thousand student semester hours over the past three years. Give you an idea, that's six hundred course sections that we have added over a period of time. I mean, it's, there is a point at which you can't do this. We are juggling schedules as hard as we can, and it's, it's, it has become an end in itself to juggle schedules for reasons that, that don't have to do with student success. One of the things we will do is create an annual schedule plan so that students can plan their future. We know what courses will be offered on each campus. I'm telling you, the, this business of canceling courses at the last minute is catastrophic to any sense of planning. It makes no financial sense. I know it's contrary to what we have all come to believe. It's just the opposite will take place with the schedule planning. It's imperative for us to be able to hire and retain good adjuncts, as well as to support our own faculty if we do that. So, so we'll work on that, and I'll bring that back. I see you smile, Mr. Burke.
I want to interrupt you just to say, can you explain it better? Because you explained it to me, and I think this is a wonderful thing for faculty and for students, for everyone involved. So how this works?
Okay. It's a, it's a planning initiative. So as we start the process, we will ask each of our deans and program chairs to take their three-year history, they know best which courses, what the dynamics look like on the front line, and tell us what they believe is the appropriate schedule to meet student demand on each campus, on each campus, so that they, they have the best sense of what students really need to make a schedule. We'll roll that up using our class-size proposals, so that in the end, we'll say to ourselves, here is the schedule that we think best meets student needs, rather than best meets our staffing or other needs. When we do that, of course, then we can project tuition using that same number. We'll find that you grow the programs best by letting them grow. We'll have some small classes. Calculus III on some of the sites will be smaller than we, than we would hope they'll be downstream, but they will grow if you keep canceling them. If you get eight or ten students in a calculus III and you cancel it, next semester, you'll get eight or ten, or six or seven. If you grow the eight or ten, people start making plans to be on your campus and to get their courses that they need. More than three thousand course sections a semester now, the idea that three or four additional math courses spread across our campuses would somehow tip the financial balance is folly. But for students, it's critically important, and like so many other institutions, we do this by offering the courses and then collapse them and tell students, I'm sorry, we can't offer this course at Topin Springs, but you can for sure drive to Clearwater and get it if you'd like to take that course. We want to let it go at Topin Springs, let, let that work. What we can do then, though, is if we guarantee the schedule, students can plan. Those, their busy lives, so they all, there's not, there are a few students who only go to college. Most of them have jobs, they have family commitments, they certainly have church commitments, other kinds of things. They can plan their life. They're likely to take more courses if they can plan it with some certainty, rather than have to say, what happens if they cancel my courses, those sorts of things. The most important thing is that students can register earlier. They won't wait until the cancellation date to register, because what they want is to be sure that their life won't get disrupted. Mr. Burke, I think when I do this, I almost always say, this is like baggage on the airlines. If you think of it, the airlines probably lose a miniscule number of bags each time they, each day. We all remember when it happened to us, however, and we all do everything in our power to keep it from happening again, so we've created this carry-on nightmare in the airlines. Cancelled courses are the same thing. Cancelled courses are the same thing. Students remember when, we canceled a relatively small number. It was 125, August of '09. But that's a lot of disruption, a lot of disruption. So students start waiting then to be sure they make their choices after the cancellations have occurred. Think of what happens. Fewer enrollments means more cancellations, and then everybody's trying to register in the last couple of days after we've made our choices. So a planning schedule, trust me, changes everybody's value system and works like a charm.
And you make commitments to the adjuncts this way, too.
And you make commitments. In this market, it's very important, I might add, because adjuncts can teach at two or three or four institutions, and we want to lock them in with certainty as early as we can. We'll, we'll take more time with you. This is the most important part of the budget process, too, by the way. We were projecting tuition coming off the schedule plan. There's only one number. Whatever we believe the schedule that meets student demand, that's what drives all of our decisions. If I can, I'll move on to the faculty hiring schedule. I mentioned in my write-up, I was, one of my many surprises, finding out that I was still interviewing faculty to hire for August was, I was happy to have the chance to meet these wonderful professionals, but it's inappropriate for our college to be hiring people in July and August for the semester that starts in August. We need to be at the front of the line if we're going to have a nationally recognized, nationally attracted faculty. I'll be bringing you a schedule next month that would allow us to get in front of the curve rather than to trail the curve. And by doing so, I think we will be the most competitive we can be. It's critically important if we're going to be competitive for faculty, black and Hispanic faculty, for whom the market is very highly competitive. You mentioned earlier on, one of the things that came up in my review is the online education piece. The success rates there are, for the most part, I may have misstated exactly, the most part, they're clearly close, 60 percent completion rates in those course, success rates, A, B, C. In some cases, those numbers are unsupportably low. I think it is time for us to do just what you asked us to do this morning, is to take a look at success rates and the nurture for students in those programs. Growth for its own sake is not a, it's now time to recalibrate what we're doing there. I've mentioned to you, your action in, I want to say the June, it may have been the May meeting, it may have been the June meeting. We have facilities master planning taking place at each of the sites right now. You're going to be very pleased with some, some immediate things we can do to relieve pressure, but then I think it will support a much better dialogue for the long term for this board, and we're doing the work as we speak. So that's the managing growth. Managing with fewer resources. First and foremost, we may have to be sure everybody has all of the appropriate information, and you see even today a change in the monthly reports to the board on revenue and expenses, and we think that will be beneficial to you, but more so to the rank and file out in the field. Everybody needs to know where all the revenue comes from. Everybody needs to know where all the expenses go so that we can ask people to help us manage with fewer resources, but everybody has to have that, that information. I happen to believe that the college can adopt a multi-year financial plan as a, as a roadmap for where we go. If we rolled up our sleeves for the rest of the morning, we could come pretty close to assessing what resources we'll have next July 1. It is not up for grabs, but you could come pretty close, and with some, some scenarios, we could start talking about, if this happens, here's how much money we'll have, here's how we can execute our strategic plan, how it would work. I'd really like to get to where we have a multi-year plan to give guidance to students on tuition. I think, I know that we don't have to be at the tail end of the legislative whip all the time. We can give our students better guidance so they can plan their financial future. The third area, increase in non-state revenues, of course, as you know, we're in the process of, of replacing our foundation director. The foundation has always been critical, will be more critical than ever. We have to put some more resources and some more horsepower behind a grants, contracts and grants, but a grants operation for competitiveness, for federal and other grants. There are always some, some issues to resolve, though you have to be careful you're not spending money that will go away. But quite frankly, this institution is so strong, the idea that we don't even compete for some grants means that millions of dollars are going to other institutions instead of us. It's not a luxury we can afford with the state. State revenue is now below 50 percent for this institution, 46 percent or 47 percent, and dropping, so we have to figure out other resource commitments. Early on, I want to do a compensation review. I'd like not to be having this dialogue for my entire tenure here. It is time to tee up the faculty salary structure, the faculty salary history, the faculty salary expectations. We're going to do the same thing for our classified and professional staff, as I mentioned in my write-up. I want to make sure that we are competitive in the Tampa Bay market, where if that's the market we want to be competitive in, and I certainly don't want to start losing employees because they can earn a few dollars more doing a similar job at some other organization or institution. And I think it's, it's imperative that we have a sense that we are competitive, and in that sense then supportive of our faculty and staff, and it's just time to do. The faculty salary structure has become very cumbersome and, in a sense, problematic, and we'll just re-tee that up, we'll work with the FGO. So looking forward to that. One college, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now down to the doing is, is going to be a different track. I want to be very, very, both workforce, E-Campus and baccalaureate, which is, are all, this institution has done exactly what you should, run hard and be successful in these areas. E-Campus has grown because people made it a priority and a commitment and everything else. Now we have issues of integration that are important, but growing it to critical mass and the impact is a highly successful strategy. It's much better now for us to roll up our sleeves and see what the integration is. Baccalaureate is even a better example of that. Getting to the levels of baccalaureate success and getting above critical mass and doing what we had to do within Florida's public policy to get those programs where they are, if you didn't do that, you wouldn't have, the future would be very, very unsettled. Now we have to figure out how best to integrate that great effort with the historical mission of the college, the AAAS mission. Workforce needs a lot of work. We do not have a robust enough commitment to that. I'll be bringing that proposal back to you in short order. And then the community mission, back to you, some of the dialogue we had earlier is just to revisit that. Core learning outcomes, not a matter of critical need, but one of great success, and I don't think it would be worthy of me to say that I've spent 90 days looking at the institution and wasn't, once again, reminded of the strength of our classroom and our core teaching responsibilities. That has been a very, very valuable experience to me. The deans, I have met one-on-one, I'm in the process of completely knowing, the deans know their craft exceptionally well. They talk with tremendous insight and, and precision about how they're moving each of their program areas ahead. I'm very, very gratified by that. I've teed up three or four key areas, critical thinking. We're in the third year of a five-year program, working very well, so that's something I'm bragging on that I have nothing to do with. Global awareness, an area that needs some additional focus. It's an area where I think we can bring the edges in. You see my commitment. Experiences for our students is our highest, experiences are our highest priority. There are three or four parts of a global program, but if our students can't discern and, and get a benefit, I'd lose interest pretty quickly on the other parts. So those are our key parts to that. You have given us guidance on the arts and aesthetic commitments as part of that, and we're working on that. I think it's, it's going quite well. You'll see, we'll bring that back, but again, we want to infuse those into the curriculum. And then I've added the technologically adept learners. We would be embarrassed if our students left us and went to other institutions and then couldn't compete, not because of the cognitive parts of the classroom experience, but because they don't have the technology parts of, of the learning experience that, that we find at, at key major institutions, again, the Florida, Florida State, USF, those kinds of things. So we need to be sure our learners are still moving ahead in that area. I think we're okay. We've got to keep it on a priority list to move forward. And then I'll finish with transparency and communication. You know, except that I didn't want to make this the first item of business, though it is a critically important item of business for all of us. We need to have higher levels of participation in the decision-making. We have to find ways to bring people who may have, over time, lost interest in that participation to bring them back. We will adopt, as we speak, some stronger communications technologies so that everybody can be part of. We can't manage big projects, we can't do learning plans, we can't do guaranteed schedules if we don't have communications and, and online technologies to keep everybody in the discussion. We simply don't have the tools to do big projects, and we, we can get that going in a very short order. The budget development process, I put a great deal of emphasis on making that as open and as transparent and, and as understandable as we can. You have a critical role, but everybody at the institution needs to know how the decisions are being made and where the monies are going. I have a board leadership, Mr. Burke, in your recognition of, of other trustees. This board has come through some, some difficult times. I've felt nothing but support. Your, since the day I got here, everything is heading in the right direction. Board leadership, people are watching how we conduct our business at all levels, and I think you're on exactly the right track, but again, I'd like to make sure that I'm running my best support to you in key areas. You have to own the strategic plan, you have to own the annual budget, you have to evaluate me in ways that are publicly responsible and that you're comfortable with, and that gives everybody confidence that this institution is in fact being led by this board rather than by this president. So that's, that's what's intended in that. I then have sorted the file and come up with some 90-day to-do list to see how fast we can capture the, the spirit and move forward. 180-day window, which would give us where we want to be at the start of, of some of the hard budget decisions, and then where we need to be, excuse me, 90-day window, 180-day window, and then by July 1, where we want to be moving forward. So that is my 90-day plan in a nutshell. I have taken the time to commit it to writing so that people can, can dissect it at a more leisurely pace. We will post it online and start vetting it within the institution, and Mr. Chairman, I stand ready to respond or to otherwise proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Brett?
I want to commend you. I think this is, it's a great document. I read it several times last night. I want to, I want to make one little interesting comment. During the presidential search, I was made aware of different requests that came in from different candidates, and to my knowledge, I believe, you've got a little head start on this, because to my knowledge, I believe you were the only candidate who requested an org chart and budgets way ahead of time. And so kudos to you on that. I just have a couple of questions. I don't want to get real specific, but these were just a couple of things that jumped out at me. You talk about retention under your focus number two, with graduation success and specifically with students of color. And you talk about how this area has to be expanded and invigorated. Do you have a couple of just suggestions as to how, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, and you've got, you've got the new eyes here in this, in this room. Talk to me about it.
I'm going to put a lot of stock in, in learning plans. So if I had my way when a student, first of all, first order of business will be to strengthen the orientation, the entry part for our students, okay? That's kind of the silent part. That will emerge from our review of our, our map review. That's what will come out of that, is my guess. I think we, that if a student, if we have a learning plan, that is, if they, if we, if we sat with a young man or a young woman and said, sit down, we're going to show you how you get through this institution, but we're not going to try to show you all of it on day one. We're going to show you how to get through the first semester. Then as you get more sophisticated, we're going to show you how to make it, pick a major and go forward. Then we're going to show you how to line up for USF. I think you do that, again, I use the, the financial analysis. I still have the same VALEC account I had when I started saving $50 a month as, as a young professional, and that VALEC account has, has taken on different nuance at different parts of my life and career, and I've changed that in partnership with, with my advisor, okay? So we've saved money for families, we've saved money for college, we've saved money for houses, we're now saving money for retirement. Same thing for students, they need to own a plan that moves forward. That's one. Secondly, a greater strengthening of several of the initiatives we have. The male outreach initiative is absolutely critical. We've got it off the ground, but it's very clear, it, we need more rather than less of that. The third part, though, is to, again, if we separate the students who don't need our help and we're more focused on the students who do need our help, if we allow some students who can do things to do it for themselves, they're not standing in line in front of the students who need our help. And, and that's the key factor. There's too many of the students and too few of us. So I think we can do that. Let me say this, the, the work that we're doing with Gibbs is beneficial to us. Can I take a second, this part of my report? We're going to give the college placement test to as many as 700 students at Gibbs by the end of the month. All of those students will then, at least in some form, see themselves headed toward college. They just took a test that gives them guidance to go on to college. And then we have strategies as to what we're going to do based on the student's performance on that, on that test. And notice what happens, we already have 700 students under our umbrella. We know their names, we know their score, we can nurture them. By the time they show up on our front door, we will have had a two or three-year run with those students to help nurture their success. So Mr. Brett, I think there's a variety of, of things to do, but making it a priority probably is the answer to your question. Sorry to go on.
The, and maybe by locker planning, right after your retention, you talk about community partnerships, and you talk about working with Pinellas County Schools beyond Gibbs, and maybe that is one way to, to enhance that community partnership with the school system, to try to help those numbers on the students of color.
Workforce is a similar thing. The world of work in America today is a high school degree with some post-secondary skills and addition, and a commitment to additional skills, and we need to work much more closely so that, as I would say, students who aren't going to be English majors can still be productive citizens, earn a credential of value, and do that in partnership with the Pinellas County School District and their P-Tech and other kinds of things. So that's an area of great challenge for us.
Under number two, increase public accountability, I would like to encourage you, on your timeline, you have us, well, and here you mentioned the first order of business should be to review the strategic plan, and yet you have it on the timeline as 180 days out. I'd like to, I'd like to see it sooner, okay? Only because, I mean, if we looked at this recently as a board, I don't have a recollection of it. And so I, I need to be up to speed personally, and maybe we can do this individually, but I'd like to see it moved a little ahead of the curve on that. I was a little, I guess maybe not completely surprised, but just a very brief snapshot on, on the hiring issue. Why, why are we so behind the curve on the hiring issue here? I mean, and it doesn't really matter what we've done in the past, it's what we're going to do in the future, but is this, is this a major challenge for us to overcome, to get ahead of the curve?
No. It, and this, this one, my most recent experience is, is totally instructive. After that, you start believing that literally the legislature is running the institution, and that's not true. And you start saying, let's wait to see what they do before we take action. And see, I don't think we have to do that.
And it's the three-year budget.
And, and the hiring process. Here's what this would look like, Mr. Brett. We'll have round numbers, 15 people retire. I'm making up numbers, I don't have the numbers. So we know that 15 people will retire next year. With faculty, we're a student group where if you retire at the top of the schedule, we replace you at, at the entry points on the schedule. That 15 retirees may support 20 or 22 new positions. schedule. That 15 retirees may support 20 or 22 new positions. So not only can you replace, you can move forward in growing the number of faculty with no exposure, no financial exposure. And then I think the board ought to have a little bit of financial exposure. If we need faculty, then we ought to make that the highest piece of the budget process. I'm going to ask you in October to approve the list of new hires for next year. It'll be based on revenue trends. It'll be based on programs, strengths and weaknesses. It'll be based on new opportunities. Your exposure in a $120 million budget will be minuscule. And we could be advertising in November, December, interviewing candidates in January, February. My goal is to have everybody hired by April so that we literally are picking first in the national competition for top faculty. Again, the financial exposure is margin. Minuscule is a better word. So it's a shift in the viewpoint of planning and financial planning.
What's the success rate? We talk about sometimes as low as 40% on the online, and we talk a little bit more about the expectation of the face-to-face percentage rate. What percentage rate would that be?
What engendered that was a review of the college web courses, okay? And over all methodologies, that success rate tends to be in the mid-50s. You know, if you take the kind of all-in, face-to-face, hybrid, online. In some of the online cases and some of the courses, that number dips below 40%. The key was, when I sort of pressed and was trying to learn more about it, I was quite taken that the people involved literally had a lower expectation. That is, as long as we're within 10% of the face-to-face level, we're still okay. And that's not okay with me. I don't have lower expectations for students in online courses for their success than I have for face-to-face. And I think all of us want to get more students to the end. So I don't know what that number is, but I can tell you 38 point, 36.2% is too low for my taste.
Yeah, that was amazing.
Terry, are you moving on to the next subject? Mr. Johnson has a question on that subject we just discussed.
Oh, I just wanted to follow up with the comment because I think this is very, very informative to this board because it lays out the first step of the strategic plan. And it shows fulfillment. It also shows concerns, but it also shows how we're going to be addressing these problems or opportunities. Call them opportunities because we've never, I don't think, as a board, seen this as a concept. And I know that in the interview with you, you talked about this 90-day report, and I just didn't know what you meant by that for sure. But when you talked about taking a long-term view of the college, more than just day-to-day, it intrigued me. And I think this is a very, very positive step on knowing where we want to be three years from now, and these are the steps as how to get there. So I think, and I'm sure a lot of thought went into this, and a lot of sticking the neck out to make projections. But I think it's going to help the college overall because it's certainly going to help students, faculty. It's going to help the board to understand where we're going. So I think as far as strategic planning goes, this is certainly more than a big toe in the pond. This is a first big step and something that we've never, I don't think, experienced as a college, this kind of in-depth planning, which has to pay off, has to pay off. I have one concern that I don't see addressed particularly in the way that I'd like to see it, and it's part of the registration process, and you talked about that in much broader terms. But I know this, last year, we had a timing difference of when students knew about financial aid, and somehow we need to move that forward into the registration process so they know what kind of financial aid, because some people were panicking because they didn't know, and some parents were in the same boat. So however we can do that, we move that forward into this process so that the students are notified ahead of time what they qualify for.
Notice, but this guaranteed annual schedule is really a counseling, advising deal. If students know what courses they're taking, they then can conclude their financial aid application, and Mike and his team can award the aid.
Right.
If they wait, we can't do anything. You know, they, so it benefits everybody by us making some commitments.
Bill, I'll just say, this, I think, is well-needed by this college. And I certainly appreciate what you've done as far as taking the first step in getting us organized, if you want to say that, to move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Brett?
Back to the budget, trying to get one budget. I like that, not a CPA or an accountant. But I do like the idea, at least if we have some new programs that are going to be brought online at some point, like if you go back and look at when the baccalaureate program started or eCampus started, I think it's nice to have a snapshot of how those programs are doing individually, and then at some point be integrated into the whole budget. I just, I think having the one budget is going to be great, but I still like the idea of having a little snapshot of how individual programs are doing.
Thank you for that opportunity to clarify. That's, my goal is not to obfuscate any of that, but I was astounded to find that different programs are carrying their own fund balances in the institution. I've just never experienced that. Now, some of that, to be perfectly candid, was engendered by the legislation. I'm looking at Mr. Johnson, who I think would recognize this. You had to keep two budgets for the baccalaureate degrees when you first started. It's important to note, that is no longer in place. That's no longer in place. We can mix and match, support however we want to do it, okay? So I'm just saying, so now that opportunity has been given to us. Now the challenge is, do we want to follow up on that?
I didn't even know that. Is that fairly new?
Yes. With the adoption, with the budget that was sent out in this year, everything is in the program fund now, okay?
Great.
Yeah. Terry, in response to your question, I had a meeting with Doug Duncan because he called me and asked me to review what you're going to see later on here as a report to the trustees. But the subject came up, and I guess I'm the one who brought it up. I would like to see our total expenditures spread over the various programs so we know what programs cost so that we can make more intelligent decisions. In other words, when we increased, we doubled our nursing program a few years ago because the trustees, Susan Jones, was very insistent upon that because there was a strong need in our community. But we never really knew for sure what our cost would be for it. And we just moved ahead because we knew we had to fulfill a community need. I would have felt much better if we'd had a handle on what those costs would be because we don't, we had, those are lost programs as far as revenue goes. We get funded per FTE at one rate, no matter what the program is. And if they're high-cost programs, you never know how far you're going in the hole. And if we had, and Doug and Jamil said this is possible, to know what the program's cost would be. So moving forward, if we decide to do something, we know what we're committing to. And the same thing with grants. I think we need a little better understanding on our grants that when we approve a grant, are we really sure that it's not going to be a drain? And if it's going to be a drain, how much of a drain? To where it may be a good thing to do just because its school needs it, but knowing that it may cost us money when you spread all your costs over a program. It's real cost accounting.
Excuse me, is that fine?
On that one point with the grant, I think, I commend our staff, though, that information sheet they put with each grant now on the second page that follows really is very helpful to us, to give us a snapshot of that. How it's measured, maybe needs to be looked into more, but at least it's, that's very helpful, what you currently give the board.
That is good, but when you, if you take into consider, are they taking into consideration all of our costs, all of our overhead costs? That's what I want to do, is to see just what it does cost us for various programs, including the grants, just so that we know when we approve it, we feel more comfortable, yes, all the costs are being addressed, and so we know where we are on this.
Mr. Brett?
I commend you on making a priority out of the faculty salary schedule. I think that's really, really important. The one thing that's not on here, textbooks. We've talked about textbooks, and I know that we're trying to come up with a new contract. I just don't want that to fall through the cracks. That's a big, big deal. And I hear from people talk about what we know is going on under the roof and what's going on out there. I hear about it all the time. So let's make sure that that's plugged in here somewhere.
I will. I'm with it. We don't control all of that dialogue.
I understand. We've got to control what we can control.
Yes, sir. I got it. Thank you.
I appreciate Mr. Brett bringing up the subjects he has. I read the document only once last night. I had two events, and I'm sorry, I want to read it some more and over again. I will tell you an overall theme, though, I was very impressed with, that you were very honest in the report, and I think that's very important. Being in government now, I serve on lots of boards with professional staff, and I feel like we're all good news boards. We only get whatever the good news is, and we never hear what the concerns. And as a board member, you almost have to dedicate yourself to drilling down to find out what the problem areas are because it's easy to talk about the good things. It's a little bit more difficult. And I can tell you, your report, I learned so much, and things have troubled me. I knew we were behind on student services. I didn't realize that registration was a problem that you painted in that report, and that's very concerning. I mean, you know, we just can't give that type of customer service to our students. And so I appreciate you bringing each of the points that you brought up. You painted the picture with the faculty hiring and all those types of things. I appreciate that type of honesty. And board members in the future may leave this board, but I hope that type of feeling, Dr. Law, you keep throughout your tenure as president, of always telling the board the true picture of the college as you see it, not just the good news. That's a challenge I will give you. The annual calendar, that concept which you shared with me a few weeks ago in one of our meetings, I'm just very excited about. It just makes so much sense all the way around. Seems like it has, you know, so many good points and so few bad points that it's just a way to go, and I appreciate your help on that. You mentioned about the change in accreditation, and I know this is something which is beyond just this college. I keep hearing the term competency-based testing. Does that go with this new challenges in accreditation and student success?
Well, I'm not, I'd have to know how it plugs in in our context, but candidly, that's it. What, it demonstrates what students know. I mean, that's the deal. So that if you had, you know, if you think of the outcome of being a St. Petersburg College graduate, we now have to describe, so what does that mean? What do students know? What did they learn when they were with you? And the one part of that, then, is to say, we have assessed our students, and they can demonstrate this knowledge or they can demonstrate this skill. Not how many people got an A on somebody's course and somebody got a B, and then we don't know what that really means because this instructor grades differently from that instructor. So, yes, the competency-based part is a key part of that. It's not the whole deal, though. You know, we don't want to have a standardized exit test. That's the...
No. I just hear that a lot now. Reading those words a lot in these national publications. So, and I don't even know how they, what they mean to our college. The other point which Mr. Brett made about the strategic plan, I think this has been part of our agenda each year. There's a part where we update the strategic plan. But I agree 100% with Mr. Brett that we've really not had ownership of that strategic plan. And maybe that's our fault. I'm not putting blame on anyone on that. I get that document, and, you know, it's always at the end of the agenda, and it's included, and you're reading it, and it's, you know, basically, I say, I guess, smart, way smarter people than I have worked on this, I guess I should approve it. When Dr. Jones used to be a part, Dennis's wife was part of this board, she really, that was her area. And we kind of relied on her to really represent the board on that strategic plan, and none of us probably have embraced that like we should. And it is a complex document. And we've asked the questions when we're tying these new programs. Do they tie in with our strategic plan, the strategic pillars? And we get the answer, yes. Well, we kind of say, okay, we take it on the surface. Probably, and I'm going to suggest something here, for us to really get involved with strategic plan, we can't do that at a board meeting. We probably need a board retreat day if we're going to do a strategic plan and really have that facilitated by you or someone else here at the college, and take us through the whole day. And I think we're going to need to make that type of commitment as a board. For us to really take it to the level, which I think you're indicating, Mr. Brett, that we need to take it and understand the strategic plan, because you could see even today at the meeting, we're going on and on with reports. They're also important. Every single one's vital. But if the strategic plan, so is that agreed upon the board that we should try to do that at some future date? You'll have to decide when the future date is to be.
We'll work on it.
And get with us, and we'll have to commit the day to being here from, you know, 8:30 to 5 o'clock to make that happen, if that's what you see.
We'll make your time worthwhile. If you do that, I will guarantee your time will be worthwhile.
That's fine with us all? Okay.
That's an excellent move. Excellent move.
And maybe there'll even be, need to be some one-on-one counseling beforehand, you know, to help us with it. I don't know. But you all have done that with other things, but I know it's big and I know it's complicated. So what other comments on Dr. Law's report here, on the learning plan report?
No, just that I think it's excellent.
Thank you. I hadn't, I hadn't read it before. Quickly, I went through it, but I want to commend you on all the work that you've put into it and all the time you're spending on your job.
Thank you very much.
We see you everywhere.
I'm having fun.
And hear about you everywhere.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Brett, also for your questions, and also for bringing up the strategic plan, all those excellent questions.
Thank you.
Let's get to the new business. I would like to try this again, and thanks for correcting me on the agenda. I had my notes on my old agenda. I'm sorry, but Terry set me straight here, which is good. I would entertain a motion on Rome Maneuver 7, that we approve C, all of C and D 1.
So moved.
Motion's made by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mrs. Bill Arakis. Now we'll move to discussion. I just have a couple of questions here, and some of my questions you all already answered I sent in advance, and I appreciate the answers. But I think the one, and Dr. Williams, it goes to what Mr. Johnson said about grants. We have a grant here where there's a, appears to be where the college is spending $717,000 or $700 and some thousand. We're getting reimbursed $300 and some thousand on the veteran one. And if you could talk to us about that and the value of that grant. I know you gave an answer in your report, your answer to me, but I think it's, this is a deficit type of grant, and we acknowledge it is. I think we, as a board, should recognize that fact and see the value of what we're doing.
Right. And in my explanation, Mr. Chair, we talked about the value of the grant, and the $727,000 are basically cash and in-kind matches of existing staff who'll be working to help and partnerships that we'll be making to do this grant. We're trying to expand our veteran services to all the other sites. Currently, it's at the St. Pete Campus in Clearwater only, but as you know, our veteran numbers are growing. And so that was what that in-kind funding was for. Right now, we can't do it without that grant.
And what type of services are we talking about providing under this grant?
Under this grant, we will expand our services on campus to help acclimate the veteran students, to bring them here, provide case management, also to provide work assistance, tutoring, a staff person who will work with them personally to help them through the maze of getting through college, coming from being a non-student to a student, and how to transition into college life, the expectations. This person will also work with the VA to help them with their benefits and help them get through school.
Anyone else have a question for Dr. Williams on this subject?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
But I think that's an excellent response. We're making an investment.
In the veterans.
In the veterans, and we know that, and going in, it gives us a better feel of what we're doing.
That's good.
All in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any pose, motion carries. We'll now have a presentation on items D2 and D3. Ms. Rider?
The purchase of the veterinary technology site by the college from the foundation has occurred because we were able to add to our PICO list last year, $175,000 that essentially was the difference between what we had in the private donation and the amount that the county was charging us, plus cost for appraisals and phase one and that type of thing. So, we have received that $175,000, and we will be moving forward to purchase the property from the foundation.
Is there a motion to approve item D2?
Some move.
Motion's been made by Mr. Brett, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D3? By the way, I keep daily progress almost on the, since it's by my house, and a lot of activity.
A lot of activity there, on schedule. One other thing to add to this Friday evening is we're going to have what we call a soft shovel in the ground for the Vet Tech building, just a very small one, because we're going to end up doing a grand opening for that project. The next item is the acquisition of the Faith United Church of Christ, which is adjacent to our Clearwater campus. We've got a map here that will show you that, and we were here about a year ago talking about the same issue. We'd made them an offer at that point. They really didn't have any other place to go, and you remember that they wanted to stay on the property, and there were a number of other criteria that they, that they put in place, so we were not able to come to an agreement. They listed the property, we went back and have been working with Mr. Lang, and made them, are ready to make them another offer. We've gotten two appraisals on the property which are listed here, so we're asking for your authorization today to go ahead and to make that offer to the church, and it is my understanding that they're in a position to be ready to move within a much more reasonable timeframe.
Okay. Did you say, did you say that the appraisal, appraiser, appraisal of this property has been done?
We had two appraisals of this property. One is 1.3 million, and the other is 1.32 million, and so we're proposing to offer them 1.3 million.
Susan, how much of that appraisal is for the building?
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I didn't bring those, and I don't have the answer to that, but I will be happy to get you that information. Would you like to see what the buildings are?
Well, to me, well, how much of that, well, I may phrase my question a different way. How much of the building space that's there can we really utilize?
There, there are some challenges with the sanctuary that are 5,500 square feet, but it doesn't mean that we can't look at it and possibly use it for some things. The fellowship hall, that is, again, almost 5,000 square feet, is being used for some pre-K daycare classrooms, so it is in pretty good shape. It's a newer building that they built, and we feel that there's a lot of opportunity for us to go in and use that. And Dr. Vittito is here today, and we've done a walkthrough of the facility, so I think he's in agreement with that statement. The office building, again, it's got some offices in it, we may be able to put something in there. Two of the four portables that are on the property will remain with the site. I'm not sure that's great news. The other two belong to a daycare that they're operating on there, but, so we do see that we will be able to utilize a good portion of the facilities.
Because a million three for less than four acres is a very costly purchase, but when you get down to it, this is the last piece of property in the area that we could possibly acquire to enhance that campus. So, this is a little bit about, to me, buying Sam's Club for Tarpon Springs. We got, what, held up a little bit, but if we hadn't acquired that, we'd have never got that property. So, I'm in favor of moving ahead, but I just wonder what our cost is going to be for acreage, because we're going to have to come in and spend some money on the facilities to make them usable to us, if that's possible.
We think that probably long-term, the sanctuary would not be something that we could use. Certainly, the fellowship hall is something that we think we can use fairly quickly. The other thing to remember is that we brought to you the master plan for the Clearwater campus, and we are in the process of refining that, and if you remember, we were challenged on this existing site with parking, with buildings, and this will give us a little bit of breathing room as we move, as we move down the future. It's residential all around, we're using the parking lot that's on the east side right now under the, under the Florida, under the Progress Energy lines, you know, so.
How many parking spaces come with this property currently?
There, there are no real parking spaces on this property, and actually, the church has an agreement with the college that on the weekends, on Sunday for services, they use our parking lot, which is right to the east of the, there's a few of them over here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the paved area is roughly, it's like eight or nine spaces.
Oh, wow.
There's no appreciable parking being added because of this.
Is there any commercial basis that we could utilize, at least on a temporary basis for the sanctuary, that we could rent that out? You know, rent it out to another church, if we drive some revenue, because we certainly can provide parking as we're doing now, but I just wonder what we can, how we can utilize the current buildings on there. Because I'm trying to figure out how to justify four acres into a million three, and say that's a, it's a good purchase, but it's a, like I said, it's the last piece of property we'll be able to obtain to add to the Clearwater campus.
Mr. Brett, do you have a question?
I just, I move approval. I, you know, we've talked about this, we need it, we need to get it.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Motion's been made, second. Further discussion, Ms. Bill Arakas, do you have anything to add?
No.
Dr. Law, did you have a comment to make? Okay. You're recommending approval, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
At this time, Dr. Law, would you like to talk about the potential juvenile welfare board, just to get a sense of the board?
Yes, there is a, an item, just a verbal report. We have taken some, the very first preliminary steps. There is a, the former home of the juvenile welfare board is just south of our health education center. It is a 50,000 square foot facility. It's behind the.
Aldi.
Aldi, grocery store there, okay? But if you come, the side street, it's only a couple, a couple hundred yards from our door. Long and short is, it's a very good building, 50,000 square feet. We could use it for expansion of our health education center. It's a very close walk for students, it's, that's not a problem. We're working on how we might put programs there that wouldn't require students to go back and forth every day, those kinds of things. The price appears, the early price even appears attractive, any negotiated price would even be more attractive. Again, we walked through it, Phil Nikotera has looked at it with us. I did ask the chairman, because of his background experience, so I didn't get ahead of the board, to take a look at the facility, but I think we're going to be bringing you a proposal for us to acquire 50,000 square feet. The NUHS, the National University of Health Sciences, is also interested in partnering with us there, so they would be a funding partner in that, in that process, but I, we may move quickly because of some things, maybe as early as October that we'll actually be giving, asking you for early preliminary approval on this process.
It would be good if we send the address to the board, so they could take a drive-by if they so wish to.
In fact, we have extra copies of the Collyards Arnold materials, we'll send those to everybody.
It's just good.
It's in the works.
So, we may be asked to do that next month and give you some advance warning. I will tell you this, it comes with what?
209 parking spaces.
I was shocked at the number of spaces that comes with it, so.
Susan was working on moving those spaces to Clearwater. I think Susan could do it. Susan might do it.
That's really funny.
That's good.
I entertain a motion to approve item F.
Some move.
Motion's been made by Mr. Brett, seconded by Mrs. Bill Arakas. I have a question, just on the renewal of stop-loss policy. Can you just hit on that topic?
Yes, we took, we reviewed all of our insurance coverage, and of course, we are the self-insured for a good portion of what we do. Our insurance financials are in very good shape. Let me indicate that our reserves are equal to the entire state consortium for the other colleges. So, we felt like moving the stop-loss up, much like you would do with your own auto insurance, you know, if you go from 500 to $1,000, you save every month. So, we have a significant savings in the operating budget with only a little more out-of-pocket exposure, and we are, we're in a good cash position for that exposure.
It does increase our, from 200,000 to?
350.
350. So, anyway, that's, just want to make sure all the board recognized that.
That's good.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now have our public hearing. Is there a motion to approve item G?
Some move.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Bill Arakas, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, just one question for the record to Dr. Nikotera. The requirement, it does concern me anytime we have an exclusive agreement with someone on something that looks like it's generic, but it's, I understand this is not, did Phil leave?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand he spoke with me beforehand and just confirmed that this designation of CPR, that this is a, the most recognized, that others don't offer the same fellowness in the, in the course training, and that's why the American Heart Association's the exclusive vendor behind this.
The employers are the ones making this demand through us, and we don't do our students any service if we don't enforce it at the front door.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we'll move to vote all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is now adjourned. I will now entertain a motion to approve item H.
Some move.
By Mr. Brett, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Information items, Dr. Law, for the financial reports and updates.
Doug Duncan is here, we want to get the financial report in front of you. You have a printed copy, which there's obviously a great deal of information on a single sheet, but Doug, there we go. In response to, to Trustee Johnson's urgings last month, I think you'll come down to saying you don't have to know all the lines, but what we have is how the budget unfolded last year, and then this year, actual to budget, so that you can do a year-over-year and a year-to-date compared to budget. We tried to make it fit on one page, but we wanted enough expense categories so the board can, can watch with us as we go. It's very important that this information be distributed throughout the institution. So, if, again, most of us learn to read the budget from the right, the lower right corner back to the top, you know, we're in good budget shape, but the distribution is a way for all of us to ask, I think, better questions and to monitor expenditures.
Our new reports are excellent, and I think also your transparency in making it available to the entire college is just so important. It's no, it's no secret, our finances, and I appreciate you making them part of the board meeting, and I appreciate you making part of whatever available to all the employees so they can see. I speak to the board on that.
A quick comment, I put some, some of the details in your packet, but if you, just draw your attention to the lower right-hand corner, which I think is probably the most significant, that you're seeing a 4.2 million year-over-year variance in the, in the revenue over expense, year-to-year, basically due to higher than anticipated revenue on the tuition side. The baccalaureate revenue is now also combined into the state revenue, and we typically don't receive it. We, in prior years, had not received it at this point, so that's part of it. And then if you just look at the expense, we're running at the very bottom, 14.5%, 15%, we're about on par with spending. So, you put those two together, and I can show you just a quick slide here, you put those two together, and you'll see the revenue a little higher, expense a little lower than, these, these lines are basically our projected budget trend of what our spending would be each month if we budgeted on a month-to-month basis. But that 4.2 million is really the difference in slightly higher revenue, just on target expense, and so I did two charts for you. The first one is all recurring revenue, so you could see going from one year to the next, the trend lines are only recurring revenue and recurring expense. The second one, we included the one-time revenue and one-time expense, primarily stimulus. And so you can see that it shows a much wider gap in the, in the revenue expense, but that will pretty much go away next year, so with that, any other questions?
I had a question, Doug. I noticed that from time to time you appear to include that the fund numbers, and they didn't appear to be consistent. I'm looking at item 7-1.1.
The financial, the end-of-year financial.
Yeah, in page one, you, on the very left-hand side, you had funds 10, 14, 16, and 18, but if you go to the next page, which is the expenditures, you didn't list fund 18 for some reason, and I don't know whether there's any significance.
I'd have to look at the report.
What is fund 18?
Teresa, thanks. You can prepare, she can comment if you like.
While she's making her way up here, do we no longer have, since we're, as I understood what Dr. Law said, maybe I'm taking it too far, but do we no longer have a different fund for the baccalaureate program than we do the?
We're still budgeting it separately. We're still using 10 and 12, okay? And I don't know what the state guidelines are.
Are we allowed to get away from that and have all one fund?
I think we can't. We want to keep fund integrity so that we can follow it à la your discussions. I'm simply saying the state now allocates, they treat baccalaureate enrollment like enrollment in other programs, and they will send us a check that will have both, everything included in it. We then can handle it on our side however we care.
Fund 18 is not used at this time. It was created with a thought to use it in the future, but, and the query just evidently is picking it up.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to be sure that you were aware of that. You dropped it in some places, and other places you still have it in there, which makes me think that when I look at a schedule, even though the numbers tie out, I wonder what's missing.
I'll get it removed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Okay.
Does that conclude your report, Doug?
Yes.
This is an information item only, needs no board action, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Well, it's just, it's something for us, and I said I've met with Doug, and we went through this, and I'm, I'm more content with this, and maybe you are too, Ken, but I don't know whether this appeals to non-accountants as a worthy informational item to you.
Absolutely. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Johnson, for representing the board with the staff on developing this, because we certainly appreciate that.
No, I didn't develop it. I take no credit for it.
Well, you give the comments, and we appreciate that.
It is a challenge, that's.
They called me, and I said, okay, I'll meet with you, and I did.
That's good.
Thank you. It is appreciated, but I think it's even, the important part about this, it makes our finances transparent.
Right.
And that's the important thing, that we're, this is not a secret document, we're putting it out there. Dr. Law wants it out there for faculty to see, for any interested party in the community to see, and it's there.
That's good.
And so, that's the, that's the, that's a vital part here of the openness of our, of our college.
And I think one thing of importance here that Doug did not bring up, on the very back page of this 1.1, there's a points of interest which go into explain in detail.
That's helpful.
An explanation of just why things differ, and I think that is more important to us than maybe comparing numbers.
You're right. Thanks, Doug, for your work on that. I would like to entertain a motion to approve item K, and from what I understand, asking the colleges has no monetary impact to the college.
I some move. That's some move.
Motion's made by Mrs. Bill Arakis, a second please.
Second.
By Mr. Brett, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Mr. President, you have a athletic update?
I will be briefing all of these. Unfortunately, events transpired where we, it was required for us to make a change in the coaching of the baseball team. We have, we have made that, that change and I'm pleased to say we will be bringing you the name of a very good candidate who will, will take over for us. The most important thing for the board to know is though, that we did uncover a series of events that will not bring great credit to any of us. There were some, some violations of the scholarship policies from the, from the Florida Junior College Activities Association. There were some, some violations on both the number and the types of awards that were made, there were some misrepresentations to students. I suspect we will find ourselves on at least one year probation and loss of some scholarships in that area. We are right in the middle of confirming the full extent of, of the issue. We have no reason to believe there's anything other than some, some bad judgments in, in the baseball program, but there is virtually no chance, given the magnitude of these, that we will not be put on some sort of sanction. As soon as we know what that is, I will be sure.
There's usually the sanction of no tournament play in the sport.
That would be a very likely.
And would it be just restricted to the sport question?
That's what we're making sure, that, we're negotiating now as to the scope of those kinds of things. I suspect that's what will happen. My suspicion is we'll be on probation for one year, which means no postseason play, and we'll lose a couple of scholarships over the next couple of years.
Restricted to baseball.
Yes, we're hoping that's the extent of it, okay? I'm sorry that my first memorandum to you implied that the problem was a little less than we subsequently uncovered, okay? But I, we knew it was going to go public and I did want you to have the information before you read it in the newspaper.
I think you handled it superbly.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So we're all upfront about everything.
I have, I'm going to pass out, well, let me take the Gibbs High School I mentioned to you, work in progress, very great support, you know, we didn't do it for the, the public benefit reason. The commissioner of education interact, saw me and came across, walked across the room and, and expressed his appreciation for us and in the council of presidents meeting, challenged the other colleges, he said, there are only 23 failing schools in, in Florida. If, if our colleges would take some additional interest in ownership, we might be able to turn this around. So he was very supportive, sent a kind of behind-the-scenes signal to keep him informed and don't let a few dollars get in the way of progress. So I appreciate that. Great work on behalf of my staff to do it. Here's what we'll do, we'll be testing students as I measured, we'll be working Kate Bernison and our people in the education program are working very, very strongly to, to see how we can take our students in our education sequence to assist in the classroom, the actual classroom, and then thirdly, greatly enhanced opportunities for counseling and nurturing as well as dual enrollment. We'll probably make expansions as early as January in the dual enrollment opportunities there. So again, college in the future.
That's good.
I am passing out to you and we'll bring it back next month, but we have initiated what we're calling, the working title is the Public Policy Institute.